Before we get started, you're not recording yet, are you, Erin? You are? Can you turn it off? So, welcome here tonight to June 13th, 2023 Graham City Council Meeting. We appreciate you all coming in attendance today. So if, Joy, if you'll give our invocation.
All right.
Please bow your heads.
Lord, just thank you for everybody here tonight and just we humbly come before you and ask for your wisdom as we do the work of the city here and just be with us and I'll have a safe trip home. Would you just name and pray? Amen.
Amen. And if you'll all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remove any hats that you may have on. Okay, on our agenda tonight, we have some special presentations and recognitions. Graham, Rick and Parks 2022 9/11 Commemorative 5K Proceeds and First Responders Team Cup Trophy Presentations. And I will ask Emma Griffin if she could please come to the podium.
Good evening. So tonight, we are going to present our official donation check that we have given to the Children of Fallen Heroes nonprofit organization that was supported from our 9/11 Commemorative 5K event. Unfortunately, I just got a phone call about an hour ago that the founder Kenneth Wosley had a family emergency and is not able to be here tonight. And so we're hoping that we can get him back up here soon in the future to make it even more official with a picture with Ken. But we did want to go ahead with that announcement of the fund. So if you want to turn it this way, yeah. So in 2022, we were able to raise $6,359 for the Children of Fallen Heroes nonprofit organization. This event, the 9/11 Commemorative 5K event, is fully supported by sponsors and donations in our community. So this is a huge thank you to all of our sponsors, our runners who participated in the 5K, as well as those who walked and made donations. That amount is excluding any event cost. And so we were able to donate a lot of money to a great organization that supports families and children of first responders and military that have lost their lives in the line of service through therapy, retreats, and other camps and programs that they offer for them. So congratulations to the Children of Fallen Heroes nonprofit organization, and we appreciate their support in our event.
Thank you so much. So Emma, are we going to take a picture or are we going to wait?
We absolutely can. I would love to. And like I said, he hates that he couldn't be here tonight. And hopefully, we can get him back up to make it even more official. But I'd love for a picture with our mayor and Captain Stokes. In the next presentation, I'd like to invite the members that we have here from the Graham Fire Department to present to them our First Responders Team Cup. This is also part of our 9/11 event. And a little special touch, we add to it for our first responders in the community. We had different teams throughout the community from Burlington, Burlington Fire Department, the US Army, National Guard, Graham Fire Department, and Graham Police Department participate in the 5K and to see which department could do it the quickest. And I would like to announce that for the second year in a row, our Graham Fire Department was the winner of the First Responders Team Cup.
Good job bringing it out. Getting my steps in. Now, if we could have all of the Graham Rec Titans, 12 U Soccer League Champions to please come up front. We just want to recognize these guys who are the soccer league champions here from Graham Recreation and get a picture with them as well.
Yeah, I can feel that.
Okay, everybody look up here. One, two, three.
Congratulations, y'all. That's amazing. Hey.
Thank you, Dan, so much.
My gosh.
Savior is my adopted nephew. Thank you all for coming tonight. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you, parents, for what you do to support Graham Recreation.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. We'll be posting the picture online. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial items, but please let me know if you have any questions. A, to approve the minutes from May 9, 2023 City Council Meeting and May 23, 2023 City Council Special Meeting. B, to approve the updated contract with Warden Coleman Attorneys at Law for City Attorney Services to set a date of public hearing for June 13th, 2023 to consider extending the corporate limits of the city of Graham for a tract of land totaling 57.106 acres off Little Creek Drive and to direct the city clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the petition. D, to approve a special events application for the Third Annual Esperanza Hispanic Festival on Saturday, September 30th, 2023, and to close the 100 block of West Elm Street from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Oh, I'm sorry. It looks like the street closure has been amended to from 1:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m., which includes setup and cleanup. So I'm kind of confused. If you're trying to extend it, why did it go from 11 to 1? Well, it says street closure request to change from 1 to 10. So wouldn't you need it to be from 11 to 10?
Move the, Jim is in the building. I believe they moved the time of when they started to 1 versus 11.
Jim, you need to come right up here. Yeah, so initially, we were looking at starting it, doing it from like 1 to 6 for a five-hour period, then some before and after cleanup. And then we're going to be doing an event at Alamance Arts first. And so our actual event now is going to be from 3 to 8. So that 1 to 3 period will be, we'll actually be doing something at Alamance Arts, but that'll help us set up there on West Elm Street.
Do you need the street closure for West Elm Street to be 1 to 10?
Correct.
Okay, and have you talked to any of the owners? Because normally, you have it on a Sunday, right?
We have the first two, first two times we had it, we had it on a Sunday, and we had it at Alamance Arts.
Right. And then, and then you've, so now that it's at West Elm, have you talked to anybody that might be open that day?
I have not.
To see if they're okay with blocking of the road.
My understanding, did they get a notice for this request?
Did they? Renee?
So that's kind of what I was going under, the understanding that they have a notice and I will visit them.
Thank you.
Just didn't have a chance to do that.
Yeah, I think it's probably okay because I don't think the coffee place is open. I don't think Alamance News or the Realtor place is open on Saturday. So it's probably okay. The only people that would, you probably want to address or that might have a concern about it would be the verdict or the Creighton Barrel, which I'm sure they'd be fine with it. I can't imagine they would have a problem with it. But it's always good to let them know so they can staff and all that kind of thing.
Yeah, we're excited about the people that are coming to the festival to learn more about Graham. That's why we wanted to kind of move it downtown. And vice versa, the people that are just visiting Graham can hear the festival, come over and check out that new mural especially.
Oh, thank you so much, Jim. That's wonderful. Yeah, so, and I'm sorry, we have a date of September 30th. Should it be July 11th? What is July 11th?
On C. I look here, it should be July 11th.
Oh, okay, okay. I'll reread that in just a second. Okay. All right. Anybody have any more questions for Mr. Albright?
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, Jim. Another pen. I don't know what my deal is with pens that don't write. So that is to do an amended street closure and request the time to be from 1:00 p.m. till 10:00 p.m. So scratch the 11 to 8. Going back to C, to set a date of a public hearing for July 13th, July 11th, sorry, July 11th, to consider extending the corporate limits to the city of Graham for a tract of land totaling 57.106 acres off Little Creek Drive and to direct the city clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the petition. Skipping back down to number, to letter E, to approve a date change for the 9/11 Commemorative 5K event to be held on Saturday, September 16th, 2023, and to approve the following street closures. Northbound Lane of Maple Street from McCaden Street to Pine Street, McCaden Street from South Main Street to Maple Street, a southbound lane of South Main Street from Pine Street to McCaden Street, Pine Street from South Main Street to Maple Street from 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. Is it, is it, it needs to be from 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m.? Is that right?
That should be 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. noon.
Okay.
Yes.
I was like.
That'd be a really long 5K run.
Okay. So if the correction on that would be from 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. To approve a budget ordinance in the amount of $500,000 for Boyd Creek Watershed Point Repair. G, to approve a budget project ordinance in the amount of $904,860 for the Long and Albright Water and Sewer Improvements. To approve the following fiscal year 2023 budget amendment ordinance for the garage and water sewer and general funds, as spelled out in your agenda. So is there a reason why H is on there? It wouldn't be handled under later on in the agenda, Megan?
So H is for the current fiscal year, not the upcoming.
Okay, so that's approving the budget amendment, budget amendments, what we did for this particular year. Does anybody have any questions about any of the other consent agenda items? Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. In regards to the public hearing rezoning of South NC 87 Highway Phase 4 Roger Springs Homes, City Council will consider request to rezone 53 904.904 acres located at South NC 87 Highway from R18 Low Density Residential to R9 High Density Residential for the purpose of extending the fourth phase of Roger Springs Homes. This was continued from May 9th, 2023 City Council Meeting. Planning Board recommended denial of the zoning by a vote of four to one. And the petitioner has requested this item to be tabled until July 11th City Council Meeting. I would like to ask if anyone was here tonight in regards to the rezoning on NC Highway 87 Phase 4 Roger Springs. Anybody here in regards to that? Okay, need a motion on the table to table this item until July 11th City Council Meeting? Okay. Do I hear second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda for public hearings is the annexation 53.904 acres located off Mayfield Drive. The City Council will consider approval of an annexation ordinance to extend the corporate limits of the city of Graham for a tract of land totaling 53.904 acres located off Mayfield Drive. Continuing, this was continued from the May 9th, 2023 City Council Meeting. The planning board recommended denial by a vote of four dash one. Petitioner has requested this item also be tabled until the July 11th City Council Meeting. Do I have a, I assume no one is here for this. Is anyone here for the Mayfield Drive property annexation? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Special use permit, East Interstate Service Road. City Council will consider request for a special use permit for trucking or freight terminal storage, repair, wash, or stop for property located at East Interstate Service Road. This site is approximately 5.547 acres. And I will go and direct my attention to our Assistant City Manager, Erin Holland.
All right, thank you, Mayor. And if it's okay with council, I believe the representative for the applicant would like to address council. If that's okay with you guys.
Sure.
Madam Mayor, good evening, members of the council. My name is Matt Wall. I'm an attorney in Burlington. Do you need my address? 3453 Forest Dale Drive in Burlington, NC 27215. We were going to be ready to go to proceed tonight, and that's why we didn't get this tabled before the agenda was printed. But there were a couple of potential conflicts that did, in fact, just today realize themselves. And so we're not going to have available in person some of the witnesses that we were going to need. Because of the circumstances surrounding special use permits and also regarding the requirements and procedural rules with the quasi judicial, those folks would need to be here in person and available to answer questions. Unfortunately, that was not going to happen. So we're going to ask respectfully that this be continued to the July 11th. It looks like you got a lot to do on July 11th, so I'm sorry to request this, but we just, we're going to need to have those witnesses here and we can't get them here tonight. So I apologize, but do request that this go over to July 11th.
Madam Mayor.
Maybe, Erin, you can put him further up the line on the agenda for July if he has witnesses, you know, here so that we can get that kind of handled.
No problem. And I think the witnesses he's referencing are the expert testimonies of certain individuals.
So that's correct. The engineer Chad Huffin and also appraisal Glenn Patterson, perhaps even the traffic, the person who did the traffic study. But I'm not, we're not clear on whether that person really will need to be here or not. But certainly Chad and Glenn, as far as those two expert witnesses.
Did this go to planning and zoning?
It did. Well, yes, the planning board heard it May the.
It was at their May meeting.
16, was that?
That's correct.
Yeah, May 16. And it, well, I won't.
What was the result of that?
It was a, so Chad had to step down, but it was a recommended approval 3-2. But if I'm not mistaken, the two that were against it weren't against the project. They were against the conditions, if I remember.
Yes, ma'am, that was, that, and I think Brian was here at the same time. And I think he would confirm that all five of the planning board members that did vote were in favor of granting the application because we did meet all the six criteria that are set forth in the ordinance. The three members that voted in favor of the motion had submitted those conditions to be attached to the application for approval. Two of the board members thought that it should just be approved without conditions. So all of the five that were here and voting did, in fact, agree that we had met the requirements for issuance of the permit, but there were some conditions attached. The two vote nay votes were just that they didn't think conditions should be attached.
And so the conditions will be listed in the planning board meeting minutes?
That's correct. So we can include the decision sheet with the next one for you for next month.
Madam Mayor, make a motion that we table this item to our July 11th meeting.
And you want it to be heard in July, right?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Do I hear a second?
Madam Mayor, a second.
Did I ask? I'm sorry. Was there anybody here to speak on this issue? No, okay. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Matt. Number four, rezoning of Kimery Road 68.791, unzoned to I-1 Light Industrial. City Council will consider request to rezone 68.791 acres located at Zero Kimery Road from unzoned to I-1 Light Industrial for the purpose of developing an industrial site in the future. Planning Board recommended denial of the rezoning six to zero. Petitioner has requested this item be tabled until the July 11th, 2023 Council Meeting. Will need a motion and a second in order to table this item to July 11th. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, make a motion that we table this to the July meeting.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, annexation 68, I'm sorry, everybody wants to come to Graham. Annexation 68.791 acres off Kimery Road. City Council will consider approval of an annexation ordinance to extend the corporate limits to the city of Graham for a tract of land totaling 68.791 acres located off Kimery Road. The petitioner has also requested this also be tabled until July 11th City Council Meeting. I'll need a motion. Is there anyone here in regards to Kimery Road annexation? I need a motion and a second from City Council as to whether they agree to table this item until July 11th, 2023.
Madam Mayor, make a motion that we table this item until our July meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number six. Annexation of 38.93 acres off Cherry Lane. City Council will consider approval of an annexation ordinance to extend the corporate limits to the city of Graham for a tract of land totaling 38.93 acres located off Cherry Lane. Like to recognize our Assistant City Manager, Erin Holland.
All right, thank you, Mayor. And I would gladly say that this one is not being requested to be tabled. As mentioned, the area being considered for annexation is located off of Cherry Lane and contains approximately 38.93 acres. Water and sewer are located near the property along Cherry Lane, and the applicants wish to tie on to the city's infrastructure. New industrial development generally creates positive tax revenue for the city. And because the public services are being connected at this, at this site, the cost to the city is minimal. New industrial development generally creates positive tax revenue for the city, and because the public services are being connected at this, at this site, the cost to the city is minimal. They have thus recommend approval.
All right, so this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on behalf of the proposed annexation on Cherry Lane?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Amanda Hodiern, eight oh four Green Valley Road, Suite two hundred in Greensboro. It's nice to see all of you again. I'm here tonight largely to answer any questions. I think this item is relatively efficient. This uh particular parcel has been zoned in Graham's jurisdiction for quite some time. So this development plan has uh come through, through the TRC process pursuant to the city's regulatory landscape and now is just seeking annexation as the final piece of that development proposal um for its by right um development under Graham's um uh development scheme. So as you heard from Mr. Holland, this is uh uh to connect to water and sewer is the primary reason, but also just to sort of complete the the contemplated um contemplated notion here back when this was zoned uh as part of Graham, to be a part of Graham and and contribute to uh to Graham as a corporate citizen. Not zoning, not not development proposal, uh entitlement type of request before you tonight, but simply the annexation to complete that sort of administrative piece of the puzzle. So I'm here for any questions. I will note, just as a matter of technical explanation, uh the red boundary of the annexation that you see and that you see on the plat in your packet, that is not the full extent of the parcel. That is just the full extent of Graham's zoning. I don't know why it was done that way. I was not involved, my client was not involved back when this was zoned. I don't know if Mr. Holland has any insight on that, but it is what it is, and so we take it as we find it, and that's what we're asking to annex, and that is the extent of our development plan doesn't go beyond that anyway, so it works out, but I'm here to answer any questions.
What, so what do you actually own then?
My client owns all of it, but the rest is in the county, um is zoned in the county and hasn't been, hasn't been zoned.
When you say all of it, Aaron, is it just that bottom part right there?
Yes, ma'am. Therefore, it's not being used.
Very strange.
The support, yeah, that's. I will say, anecdotally, it used to be sort of common practice to, in order to create buffers, to leave tight spaces like this unzoned to, and so that it would, it would prevent the development from being in that area because it wasn't zoned to support it. So I imagine this was probably done under that type of thinking.
Is there plans to develop that CR um development below it? Yeah, I mean, I see those, but I'm saying to go up near, closer to their property. I see a road.
So that would support the theory that that strip was left to to leave a buffer. I don't, I'm not sure the order of zoning operations there, but incidentally, it does serve that purpose nicely.
Under the current zoning, uh, we're not here to discuss um a rezoning or anything, but just for clarification purposes. There's obviously a residential neighborhood across the street, and there's a residential neighborhood to the left. What kind of buffer do you have there?
The, the, under the development plan, the TRC plan, I'd have to defer to Aaron, that's also not before us tonight, but I, I know that's been under review at TRC, so he probably knows that more off the top of his head than I do.
Yeah, I would have to pull the site plan, but essent- essentially, you have, you have your um more stringent zoning along your residential property lines. It's lighter zoning a- adjacent to the road, or if there was a light zoning, like an industrial zoning on the other side. But if you should want me to look it up, I can, I could try to pull up, see what the site plan says.
Well, I can't tell from here, and I, I'm sorry, I didn't, didn't, uh, I don't, I looked at so many of these, I can't remember. Is there, like, from the aerial view, is there a natural buffer there now?
Do you believe this site is quite vegetated, if I recall correctly? My memory of this whole assemblage is, is, was the broader assemblage that we originally examined a few years ago, so I may be off, but I do believe it was pretty vegetated. And as Mr. Holland was alluding to, your, your development ordinance, which I, of course, referenced in the top of my comments as governing this site, regardless of whether we annex, you know, does base its landscape buffering on use to use. So you've got LI next to, got existing LI next to existing residential, so that's gonna require your most stringent landscape buffer anyway.
Well, I'm, the reason why I'm saying this is just um nothing to do necessarily with the annexation, but just for clarification of what I think that we had an issue earlier where people were saying, uh, a developer was saying, for instance, that they were going to leave a natural buffer, I think, like a fifteen-foot buffer. And what they did was they went in and stripped that entire buffer of the, the natural trees that were mature trees that were there and then planted back.
Right.
Little bitty trees.
Right.
That will take another, you know, twenty years to mature. So I, I just think that, you know, as a as a um template, so to speak, I think of of what we want to see is people building with the land and with the natural buffers that are there. It upsets neighbors, obviously, you know, this, been doing this for a long time, when people go in and just clear cut buffers that are supposed to be there, so. Do you know what the plan's gonna look like?
Well, um unfortunately or fortunately, we won't have that option here, as we can now see, Mr. Holland, thank you for pulling that up. It's been farmed, it's a field, so there's nothing existing there. So the, the, the landscape ordinance of the city will require the developer to plant a buffer.
But, but the part in the rear is pretty natural.
That, that is, yeah.
Is it their intention to leave that buffer?
It is, and it's governed by the state's stream buffering requirements anyway.
Okay.
That'll, that'll remain.
Is protected.
So even up, even above the stream, it's also um governed by the state, right?
Right, so the buffers are set off the center line of the stream, and then it's fifty feet on the other side.
And all you're asking for tonight is just the annexation, right? That's it?
Yes, ma'am, you got it.
And a mayor, I make a motion that we approve this annexation.
Okay, wait, we need to, we need to finish hearing from what. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak in regards to annexation? State your name and.
Tom Boney with Alance News, one fourteen West Down Street. Could you go back to the earlier slide just a minute, uh, and my question is, the strip on top did not have any designation. I- i- is that a part of the annexation also? The, the horizontal strip? And, and do we know what it is currently zoned? It's not marked there.
R eighteen.
R eighteen, both on the left side of the road and the right side? But it is a part of the annexation.
Yes, according to the flat.
If this is already gone through TRC, do you have, like, what the plans look like?
Uh, we'll pull up. I'll find one, it doesn't take a long time to load up.
Is there anyone else here that came to speak in regards to um this thirty-eight point nine three acres off Cherry Lane?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second motion.
Does that show where it is on the land on the property?
Uh, I think, I think this is a zone being viewed here. Cherry Lane runs here. Entrance is here. And then here's the building, the proposed building here.
And it's around two hundred and twenty-some thousand square feet, is that right?
It was two eighty-two.
Two eighty-two. And one last question. Do, do you know of any plan used for the residential part that you want to have annexed in? Because you only show this building, but that's only on that one section, right?
Correct, there's no plan to proposal for that. It's, it's just um also within the ETJ and, you know, obviously voluntary annexation permits us to ask for that to come in, and were there to be a development plan, it would have to go through the process. Were there to be any use other than residential, it'd have to be rezoned through the process, so.
Yeah, I was just asking if you had any.
Yeah.
There.
Thank you for the question.
Other residential properties owners around there want to be able to know, so um what the intent is, obviously.
Status quo right now.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing in a second. No one else to speak. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And we need a motion to approve or deny the annexation request.
Madam Mayor.
For the, for the ordinance to extend the corporate limits to the city of Graham for a tract of land totaling thirty-eight point nine three acres located off Cherry Lane.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the annexation.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Adoption of the budget, and I would like to ask if the council would be okay with allowing anyone that's here to speak before we get into the budget to ask for public comment now at this point, rather than at the end of the meeting? In case this is an extended agenda item. And I, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we uh make an amendment to the agenda to allow public comment now. Get that out of the way and then get into the budget, uh, agenda item.
And ma, uh, I'll second your motion.
Okay. All in favor? All opposed, motion carries. I believe there's a gentleman here, Mike Barlow, that's come to um speak to us. Hey, Mike?
Hello. Yes, uh, mayor and councilman, uh, first time speaking, so forgive me and don't know the protocol. But I'm with Comtech, uh, I'm a local business owner, twelve oh four South Main Street in Graham. And uh, this will be the easiest request that you have, because I'm not asking for any money or any work. What I'm, what I would like to do is, we have uh grown our business to the point that we have now do, begun, begun doing service for Town of Elon, City of Meban, and a lot of other towns and cities around doing IT and phone work. And we've been able to create savings for those different, for lots of companies and local governments around. I wanted to offer a cost analysis, no charge, just to see if the consolidation of the multiple phone systems that you have here in the city, because you're using, as I understand it, multiple systems from multiple companies. If we consolidated it, we may very well be able to save you money and give you a simpler, easier to support system. And we're literally two minutes down the road, and Graham dollars, of course, supports Graham jobs as well, which is nice. A second thing I just wanted to throw out there, there's been a tremendous number of cyber attacks. Again, we are an IT company. I wanted to offer a free vulnerability and scan penetration test of the network just to make sure that the defenses are as good as they should be. This is a three thousand dollar scan. I'd like to provide it free of charge just to run and just see if there are any vulnerabilities. It's much better to find out this way than find out the hard way like Chatham County, Durham, and lots of other cities already have, getting hacked and having to deal with the damage control. So that's basically it. If you guys are interested, the offer is there for both of those things, either one or neither, it's up to you guys, so.
I think it's free, doesn't hurt to allow a local vendor to um to hopefully save us some money, so what do you guys think?
I think it's a good idea.
Megan, you have any laundries with it?
No, I will just point out that fairly recently, we had a, a similar scan done, um, but.
Did it cost us money?
It did not, no.
If it's been, if I may, if it's been more than six months, it may not be a bad idea to have it checked again, because security is always an evolving thing. It's not a lick it on and then you're secure, it doesn't work that way. You already know that, I'm sure.
I'm fine with it.
Well, Megan, if you could contact Mike and, and work out those details and uh and uh see if that's something that is um amenable to the city and could possibly, and report back to the uh, the council what your findings were. We certainly want to avoid any kind of cyber attacks.
Absolutely, they're no fun, for sure, so, thank you. Would some, would.
We've had quite a few of them, Waste Industries lost all of their data.
Oh, there's a lot.
A lot of really big Red Wing Boots lost everything. They had to go, they were literally going around pulling out plugs of computers, so.
Aspen, Denver, that were down, dozens of sites, there's a lot of them around, so we want to stop that if we can, so.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And is David Michaels in the building? Okay, um, if you, as a point of a clarification from last month's hearing, if you could come up and address the issues regarding um the tract of land.
Metevue Drive, I believe.
Yeah, Metevue Drive.
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor and members of council, um I uh want to apologize for misspeaking at the last meeting regarding uh some of the lot sizing that is on the approved plan for the Metevue Glen subdivision. Of course, that was a mistake, I would have nothing to gain by coming up here and intentionally trying to mislead council in any way. Windsor Homes, who I work for, has done a number of sites in the community, we want to continue to do business here. And so I apologize for uh the comment that I made. The site on the twenty-eight lots does average about eleven thousand four hundred and sixteen per lot, so it is slightly less than the uh, the twelve thousand. The site was previously, I guess it was already zoned, there was a lot of discussion at council last time about voting on that site, and I tried to clarify, and I guess I got it in my mind that there never was a public hearing or anything that we had to do on this site, it was already zoned, and because of the number of different sites, Forks of Alamats, Valor Ridge, we had a, a extended zoning process on that, the Oakmont subdivision, we had a extended zoning on that. There seemed to be some confusion about how the voting went on this site, when in fact, there was no, no voting, and I guess that's what I had in my mind, that when I was thinking that these were all twelve thousand square foot lots, it was already zoned our twelve, and we didn't have to have any changes to that. It is being developed under the open space option of the ordinance. It has been fully vetted and approved by staff. All the permits are in place, and nineteen of the lots are actually already um basically graded. So I apologize for making that comment, I hope it didn't influence your decision in any way. Since similar to the previous annexation, we're basically here for that, just to get the water and sewer, complete the. Uh, since similar to the previous annexation, we're basically here for that, just to get the water and sewer, complete the administrative process. The site has been, again, fully approved by staff. I wish I'd probably referred to, to Mr. Holland or, uh, at the last meeting to, uh, to pull up that site plan. Cause I really got to the parking lot and I was like, I'm thinking maybe those lots aren't twelve thousand square feet, and, uh, the lady who was with me, uh, I mentioned that to her, and so I regret that, um. We do have another annexation coming up for the Oakmont subdivision, which was on the agenda tonight for that popular July eleventh meeting.
There was also the comment about the barrier and that you didn't take down all the trees, which in fact, you did take down all the trees.
Well, I think your question was, you know, what is our preference in terms of trying to preserve buffers?
I'm happy to replay the tape.
Yeah.
Um, but.
And we do, we do prefer to preserve buffers, we left an extensive buffer around this site, as I mentioned, regarding a dedication of land for a future trail. Trying to stay out of stream buffer areas where we could have otherwise impacted. We do adjoin a few lots, uh, in this neighborhood, there is a sewer line that adjoins several of those lots, which there would have been no way to preserve a buffer in that location. The site needed extensive grading, I think, I mentioned that every site is different, that the, um, topography has to be taken into consideration, the utilities have to be taken into consideration. Uh, this site has, uh, flood plain, uh, within the, the buildable area of the site and fully permitted. We, you know, got the flood plain development permit, the site has to be raised up to accommodate, uh, the houses that will go on those lots safely and effectively. Uh, so that was a consideration in developing the site. Um, if there is a required buffer, which in this case, because of the zoning that were adjacent, there was no required buffer, um, that needed to be left. You know, if, if, if we can leave a required buffer for sure, or leave a group of trees that makes sense to leave, we will do that, but, uh, trying to leave random trees here and there to save a tree that might otherwise.
Okay, what I was trying to do in the last meeting is explain to you the intent of the open space. And that is to say that we want developers to be able to, in exchange for buildable land, that they would not just go in and clear cut the property and that you'd build with the property with the existing natural habitat that's there. We understand you have to cut down trees in order to build a development, no one is, I don't think anyone's criticizing you for that. But what I'm saying to you is that the purpose of the open space, that particular ordinance, I understand that it's being misused and misrepresented, and it seems like we're getting developments that have, they're using the flood plain areas that are unbuildable anyways in order to be able to get a smaller lot, and what I was saying was that the reason why I did not vote for the, uh, development in the beginning was because I don't agree with, um, misleading the public that they're, that when they buy, they're thinking that they're going to have beside them R twelve lots, which is a minimum of twelve thousand square feet. But when you try to use this open space, you can take all of your land that you can't develop on anyways, that's in the flood plain, and not include that, and then actually get ten thousand square foot lots, um, which is a big difference, um, you know, on the, on the property. And you assured me that all of the lots out there for this development were twelve thousand, uh, square feet. And then I, and I, just like I did with Amanda, I said, I just think that it's important that you understand the interpretation or the intent of what we were trying to do with that ordinance, and I asked for Aaron, and I hope I can get the consent of the council to say, I want the ordinance rewritten for what it was intended, which was for someone not to come in and just completely clear cut an entire area and to leave some natural open spaces throughout the development so that it doesn't just look like a clear cut area, and that if there's mature trees on the exterior that aren't needed in development, that you would leave those and not just cut them down for the sake of cutting them down. That was the intent, I know, because I was on the council and helped introduce it, and it's frustrating to me that it's not being used for that purpose, so, um, and you know, it was just really frustrating that I believed you, I mean, I believed what you were saying, and I based my decision based on information that you gave me that was not correct.
And I apologize for that, and, and I misspoke, you know, the time lapse between when this site plan went through, I guess, and when we came in for the annexation. But I, I, I've probably forgotten that, you know, some of these lots were less than twelve thousand square feet. I wish that I'd been able to get that clarified, I should have asked for that clarification to be sure. And, um, you know, we work extensively with staff.
Work with developers, but you have to understand when we get phone calls from citizens about things, it's very disconcerting when you say something here and then it finds, it comes to be not correct, and, and really, I'm, help me help you, because I want you to have a good relationship with your neighbors, I want them to, you know, um, be able to trust you when you do this project, the Oakmont Mount project, other projects that you might want to do here in Graham. But with that has to be a mutual trust between developer and the council.
Totally understood, and, and that's certainly why I'm here tonight, to try to clarify that, and, um, also I can do is say, I'm sorry that, that I made that statement because it's not my intent, it would never be my intent, it would be a fool's errand to come in and intentionally try to mislead council or planning board or any other, uh, group about what our intention is with a proposed development. It's, it's something I don't think I've ever had happen to me in thirty-plus years, I presented many, many cases in front of many different councils. And in this case, I said the wrong thing. I wish I'd clarified it at the meeting and, you know, asked for the site plan to be put up, it would have been fairly obvious. We worked extensively with staff to, um, design the site to ensure that the areas that we left as open space were accessible from all parts of both of these cul-de-sacs. So that the public or these residents would be able to utilize the future trail that's planned to be able to get down to the stream, to the trees that were left in those areas. This is about a sixteen acre site, and we've got six and a half acres of total open space on this site, um, which is more than a third, almost forty percent of this site is in open space.
But the majority of the open space that you're designating back to the city is in the flood plain, and you couldn't have built on that anyways. With that flood insurance, I mean, you could technically.
Further than we did, if we had made every lot twelve thousand square feet, we could have pushed the lots further back, closer to the stream, still been in compliance with the rules, um, but it didn't make any sense to try to do that. We wanted to leave as much of that buffer as we reasonably could and still create a site that we felt like was going to be, um, a nice neighborhood, um, generous lots. Uh, if you haven't been out and seen the one cul-de-sac that we've graded, I would invite you to go take a look at it because it really does look nice. Um, with the tree backdrop, safe trees behind the houses, nothing's gonna fall on a house. We have that one neighbor that we did clear through the property line, and he wants me to come across the line and clear more trees, and so, I mean, you know, I don't want to do that because, um, it doesn't make sense to keep, to keep going, so we'll work with him, you know, there's a tree that, you know, probably does need to come down, that we got into the roots a little bit, and we'll take care of that, but, we, we want to do nice developments, um, we want to work with the land, it's tougher and tougher because of the number of regulations that are involved.
I, I understand all of that, and it's, it is very costly, and what, that was one of the provisions and, and the reasons while we did the open space, because developers are under enormous amount of pressure to put as much, um, take up as much land as they can possibly fit in a square foot, I get that, all of that, but it's upsetting when you're taking the intent of that ordinance and not using it, and I don't blame you for trying to put as much as you want to on there, you're a developer, I understand that you're in the business of making money. I'm just saying that moving forward, I want us to clarify that ordinance so that it's intended use and the purpose of exchanging lot size and coming down from R twelve to R ten, that we get something for that, other than just flood plain property. That we have, the, the intent was so that open space would be located throughout the, the development. Just so that you know, moving forward on future plans, kind of what were, at least what I'm looking for on the council.
Right.
Um, but thank you very much for coming, and I appreciate it, and.
It's a common factor in many different ordinances to have a provision like that, to try to consolidate development, the density stays the same. It consolidates the development onto the more usable parts of the property and leaves those environmentally sensitive, steep slopes, fragile areas out of play, which is, I think, a primary goal for every municipality that, that I work in, so. Uh, again, I apologize for misspeaking and I appreciate the time tonight to be able to come back and try to clarify. I'll be back in July eleventh for the, uh, the next annexation. And, um, hopefully.
Well, let me clarify that this isn't a public hearing, but I know that there are some people in the audience that would like to speak in regards to this because they didn't have an opportunity to speak at the last meeting, and so I want to give them an opportunity to speak, they came here tonight to, so I hope you'll listen to what they have to say, and, um,
I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here from that community that would like to speak? The fearless leader.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Tally, I appreciate the opportunity to come here, my name is, uh, Peter Murphy, I live at nineteen thirty-three Metevue Drive, uh, adjacent to the property that we were just speaking of. And, um, we, uh, we, and so several of our neighbors are here also coming in, in this evening based on questions that we've shared with Mayor Tally and communications that we've had, and we thank you for this time to understand what is unfolding in this development process and who is accountable to maintain the integrity of the development, the creek, and the homes being like and kind of what exists in a peaceful, friendly neighborhood. Um, my first question is, I, I, I brought up my first, I've owned my house for two years now, and I questioned it, I visited the town hall here and got the R twelve zoning and the explanation of it, met with the current director at that time, I think he left a couple weeks after that. Uh, but I was very comfortable that there wouldn't be a lot built next to my property. That the, uh, annexation is the only thing that has come in front of this council on this property. Not, no other time has this, this property come in front of this council, which is a little confusing to me, because it was said at the annexation that these were twelve thousand square foot. I know David Michael has apologized for that misstatement, but that was a huge misstatement. Cause the final thing was said is, we're gonna hold you to that. And then since that meeting, they have then pushed to develop these properties and cut the lines exactly less than, you know, the twelve thousand. In fact, on the nineteen properties, there's only eighteen, there's only one that is more than ten thousand. There's, there's only one that's more than twelve thousand. The other eighteen on this property are just over ten thousand, and that's it. And the main thing is.
Is that correct, Aaron, cause I thought six out of the twenty-eight, that only six out of the twenty-eight were twelve thousand?
I, I believe, uh, we counted them up, and it was roughly, yeah, six of them, of the twenty-eight were twelve thousand or more.
And so the majority of the development was under twelve thousand, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, speaking, speaking of just the nineteen next to my house, only one, the one right next to my house, and that's only because of the utility buffer created that as a twenty, that, you know, twelve thousand square foot one, all the rest are sixty foot wide. And squeezing, I mean, basically, that's what they were going for, the sixty foot wide. And considering a house that's four, you know, forty foot wide, it's, you can, you're not, you're only about, you'll park one car in the street, and these are narrower streets also. But the, uh, you know, I, I was looking for clarification on the R twelve, the development ordinance does have a requirement that they either have an HOA uh, or a dedication to the city. And the city needs to accept that dedication. And I've asked that question, has the city accepted that dedication, I, as, the only answer I got back was that the city accepts dedication right of ways all the time, and maybe for future projects. But has the city accepted this one?
I, I asked that same question, and the part of this annexation would be accepting the, the property surrounding there that is the, basically the buffer, the open space, and they do that in, in order for it to be a trail. Now, my concern is like, why would I want to buy a house when it's a public trail right beside, behind my house? I, I don't know the answer to that question, I talked to Aaron at length about it today and said, does the city of Graham want to accept that designation and the responsibility and the maintenance of it? But he said it's part of, I think, like, mountain to the sea trail or something like that.
It's a, it's a greenway network, and it's part of the, the, uh, mountain to sea trail, which we have in a few other subdivisions, I believe Ricky, you were part of several of those, the golf course, Riverwalk. It's like I'm missing one. But, but we, we have those dedications in other areas, and they're natural trails that coincide with the network that, that we work in conjunction with the county. It's, it's a network of greenways.
And where's the park located in relation to this?
Uh, sort of across, uh, it's across Rogers Road.
Do you understand?
You know, listen, this is, do you know where this neighborhood's at?
Mm-hmm.
If you turn on.
Yeah, across from the park, right south of Graham.
Hold on, if you come on Wildwood, it's the first road to the right at the very end. Actually closer to, like, if you went straight across Rockwood, you'd kind of come into it. It's down a little ways from the park.
I guess my question is, is it rational that someone would go out there trail hiking behind the general public? Or why wouldn't you want an HOA to be maintaining that open space? That's my question.
Cause if it's an HOA, they can bar anybody from walking on that trail, but the homeowners.
No, I understand that, but as a homeowner, do I want a public trail behind my house? I mean, as a, as a homeowner, I probably wouldn't want that. I mean, it, it's, I guess it's somebody's preferred thing, but I mean, I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that, but it just seems.
Can I make a point on that also?
Sure.
There is no connection anywhere else, there, there was one piece of land off of Luther that was left out of this development that's still retained by one of the original builders that own the property. And that's the only connection to the park and to Rogers Road, which is interesting because that's, was kept out of this. And so how do you get the rest of this connection to make this trail? When it's not part of the dedication? Cause it's completely left out of it, and it shows on your, uh, GIS site.
Can you show us that, Aaron?
Are you referring, are you referring to the stubout that you want to see? Uh, uh, whi- which part you, you want to look at?
Where the trail would be, I guess.
I think you're referring to the, at the bottom.
I'm actually referring.
Rogers and, and Wildwood.
Correct.
Where you turn to the right, where that driveway goes in and follows the creek.
Correct.
That's still owned by.
Correct. That's owned by the other HOA, and then. That's owned by the other HOA and then the back part of that is now still owned by Schaffner. And that one was left out of this project.
Through the first house on the right there on Wildwood. That land that, that driveway where the little parking area is on, look at Wildwood. Okay, other way, other way.
Yeah, the, the green track there is owned by Schaffner.
Okay.
It's all green, which green?
Uh, the outline.
The outline green.
The outlining. Sorry, it's, it's hard to, hard to see the, uh, the brighter green.
That's owned by Schaffner? That's not?
Correct. It's not part of this project.
That's still in a tree farm or is that? Owned by them directly?
I, all I saw was Schaffner's name on it. I don't.
Cause all that was originally the tree farm.
And Aaron, show me the development. On there, do you, can you set, show it on there?
Yeah, that's where nine houses is being built there at the end of Luther, that stubout.
That's the stubout on Luther, the other ones at the end.
It kind of, kind of goes like a, like an hour pass. It's like boom.
I think the one in question is the one at the bottom.
And there's no maintenance cost to. That, that trail that surrounds the.
It, it's, yeah, I mean, your natural trails are generally natural. They're just. Space. I mean, the exclusion of, and, and Windsor was. If I back up just a little bit, our, our pedestrian plan identifies. Projects like this. That's why you see these mountain to sea trail. Arrangements in subdivisions adjacent to public facilities. Uh, so this, this sort of fits in with our pedestrian plan. Windsor, when asked to, um. Work with the city on that. Didn't pretty much put up any argument on that when they basically gave that property, uh, to the city in that dedication. It can easily be taken out, but then you're kind of going against the pay it plan where it encourages for these type of. Uh, arrangements of. Greenway trails. Where we have been sort of doing them along the way in several other subdivisions. And like you said, it, it, it really does boil down to a preference. I mean, if someone wants to walk a natural trail versus a track. You know, it's, it's really what someone likes. What, what do you offer?
No, I, I, I'm, I'm at a loss for words. I don't know what other council members feel, but I'm not going to go to somebody's subdivision and walks. Behind their houses. I, I mean, um. I, I mean, second amendment, I'm not doing that. I'm not going to get shot or like, people are going to wonder why I'm out there in the middle of the. Natural area walking behind their houses. I, I don't know. It just seems odd to me.
Well, it seems that if we took the trails out, would all the lots have the requisite twelve thousand square feet?
We, we wouldn't want to do that because then you're going to push those properties into floodplain. And then every single property would now have to have floodplain insurance. So you're putting them into, uh, sensitive space.
Well, I think, I think what he's saying is. Would that, if you didn't have it public, would they effectively have twelve thousand square feet?
No, because.
Like if it was owned by the HOA, you know, and the lot backs up to so much behind it, would it effectively have twelve thousand square feet?
Is that what you're asking? I, I'm trying to follow.
Yeah.
Yes. I mean, you got the watershed land, but.
It would look the same.
It would look the same.
It would, but.
Now you've taken the, the, the walking trail out. Cause you've used the walking trail as part of his green space calculations.
And I'm not in, in favor of taking away wa- uh, trails, but it's nothing improved. It's, it's. There's not a pathway or anything. It's just unused land behind somebody's house. That you're going to designate it as a public trail.
Is the trail in the floodplain?
Yeah.
Part, yes.
It's all in the floodplain.
Eighteen of the nineteen homes.
Most, most, most trails are. Most, most trails run alongside your rivers and creeks.
Eighteen of the nineteen homes that being built are in the hundred year floodplain.
Okay.
They brought in a lot of dirt. I don't know how that changes it, but if you look at the line for the one percent or the hundred year floodplain, it goes through eighteen of the nineteen properties. So the back, backyards are still in the floodplain. Uh, I don't know how it changed with whatever permit they had to get to bring in that amount of dirt.
What are you showing, Aaron?
Uh, I was going to show you another one that shows you where it runs adjacent to, uh, river.
I mean, it makes sense if, you know, like the one on fifty-four, that, that they have a, they actually have an improved walkway almost. I think it's, isn't it like, uh? Um, like they put rock or something out there? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To, to which one?
The one off fifty-four, I thought they had that, they had an improved area. Like it looks like a walking trail. That goes, goes by, goes by a little, um, river or whatever there.
That's, that's the canoe access. That's, that's not, that's not the trail I was referencing.
No, no, no. This is in a subdivision. Is Riverwalks, is there's, um, don't that, is there a trail all natural?
Or hills?
Yeah, I thought they put some sort of something down there.
I think she's asking about the trail itself. Right. Lead to it. Yeah, lead to it is, is that, but once you get on the trail, it's, it's just.
Natural.
Natural.
But it goes along the river, right?
You can see it here.
I mean, that to me makes sense that, that, that that would be a trail. But just a random subdivision with no access to park or public. Area. Am I missing something? I just wouldn't. I wouldn't feel safe walking out there in somebody's backyard.
I, I have a question. Since all of this was approved under some. Misrepresentation, is it something that can be revoked? That approval will be revoked?
Part of the annexation that's on the table for tonight includes the acceptance of the public area surrounding.
It's actually not on there tonight because it was pushed, right? The, the next meeting?
Is approved.
I mean, this part was already approved, right? So. But it was also.
Under some.
Gentleman had misspoken to some of it. And so my question would be. Is that approval revocable due to the misrepresentation, intentional or unintentional? Uh, that, that would be my question to, I guess, the attorneys. Would, since, since, since it was something that was already approved by council. But the gentleman came in tonight and said, you know, I, he, he misspoke. He made, he ma- made some statements that were not accurate. Therefore, we approved it based on his statements. So would that approval be revocable?
I don't think so. No. Talk to y'all or?
Okay, wait one second.
Are you talking about the annexation being rescinded?
No, I'm talking about the approval for the lots because really what was approved, we thought were. Twelve thousand square foot lots, but they're actually ten. Some of them are ten, so.
But there was, there was nothing on the agenda to approve the lot size. That's what people have to understand. There's, there's noth- there was never at any point anything where they came to council and council agreed. To any smaller lots. It was already zoned R twelve. It's still R twelve. It's not changed. What changed was. In the annexation, when we were doing the approval process. Him making comments about the lot size to be untrue and about the, the, the buffers and the trees and all that sort of thing. And so. I probably would not, cause I, I'm pretty consistent. I probably would not have voted for it. Had I known that. This designated area that was around it, but there was no one here in opposition of it. There was no one that, um. And I thought what he was telling us was true, that it was twelve thousand square foot lots and, and that they had not taken all the trees down and all that. And so I. I'm like, well, maybe that's why the, the, no residents came. Um. So, you know, we can only act on the information that we have and if it's incorrect, it's in, you know, it's incorrect, but. Um, I did contact Bob after this and say, you know, at a minimum, I wanted, um. Mister, um, Michaels to come and do a point of clarification in regards to the annexation. Um, but I do think. Do you not think that the council would have the right to be able to say whether we want to accept that designation of the open space?
I, I can remove it. Yeah. And that's what, that's what I was getting to a second ago. They, they, uh, agreed to dedicate the space, but council can. Say we don't want that to be dedicated. And what would have to happen, we would have to have, uh, Windsor present. A updated site plan for TRC to sign off on again, but basically removing that. Dedication off the site plan. So it gets approved with it not being gone there. It's, it's separate from the annexation. It's a, it's, that's through the TRC process.
Okay. Was there any other concerns that maybe Mr. Michaels could address for the residents there? I have been inundated and I know. The city has probably heard from every person on Wildwood about the trucks. And the condition of the road. And I will say, and I hope you'll go back and tell anybody that's not here tonight. That the city staff has been working with Burke Robertson, who is over our public works department. With somebody from Windsor, right? About, uh, them coming out and repairing the road. I think that would go a long way with the residents. Um, obviously we can't make that a condition of anything, but I absolutely think that that would go a long way with the residents because. Cause some residents are like, they need to get on a different road. I'm like, well, then they're going to tear up that road. So let's keep them on the road. That is already, um, having a lot of failure and then work with them to repair the road. Once they're done with the construction. So that's our, our thought with meeting with them, but I was very happy to hear that Windsor was open to repairing the road that was being damaged. So was there any other concerns from the residents?
There's.
Yeah, let me.
I'll just get my, just a couple of quick things out is, you know, this whole process of approval. You know, I wrote to a planner back in, I bought the property. This property was purchased by this developer in January. I wrote in March questioning how they were, you know, putting these smaller lots on it then. And it's not coming in front of this council and this open space part, I think, has to put it in front of the council. So they make that point of, you know, please, please look at that. And, and then there's no coordination of buffer zones or anything. Um, when I, I wrote, and I have had communications with, uh, Mr. Michaels and other, other members of his staff. To the point that I recorded my last conversation with him because we're in dispute over what was actually said, but I've got it on tape of what was actually said. And they're disputing what was agreed to, but they damaged trees on my property. By digging right next to them and they left these big pine trees that are subject to falling instead of leaving good hardwoods. And, you know, there's no communication, there are no, uh, plan in place. And, uh, you know, so I, I don't want to have my property damaged and others were damaged too. And, and then I asked about, well, what are these homes going to look like? And I, I wrote back to me and said. We're still coordinating what exact product we're going to implement in your neighborhood. How have they not know what houses they're going to put up and what they're going to look like? Well, you know, at the last meeting, you had a. A developer that was having to explain the hardy plank versus the vinyl. These guys aren't having to explain anything. And how does that happen?
So in a strict reason, in a strict zoning, like they can build anything in, with any materials that they want to build and this. This is consistent with any city municipality. You can't decide what product they're going to. Put up. The only way you can do that if, if they come to the city and ask for a, um, conditional rezoning. Then we can implement some stricter guidelines, lighting, fencing, um. Uh, we encourage developers to do that as much as we can because it does lend itself, the nature of the conditional zoning lends itself. To the developer trying to work, um, very hard with existing neighborhoods to make it very harmonious. But in a, in a, this has already been zoned R twelve and they have the right by use of that zoning. To go in there and they're using the open space. Ordinance in order to be able to reduce the lot size. They're not allowed to reduce it any less than ten thousand. But I believe in that ordinance because what it's supposed to do is to keep the natural. That's the intent. And I, after this hearing, I hope we can all have a consensus for staff to look into. Rewriting that ordinance so that it goes back to what the original council twenty years ago intended. Because you don't want, if it's R twelve and a developer comes in and they don't have this provision. They can completely strip every tree from border to border and there's not a thing you can do about it. Well, I understand that, but that's what's so frustrating to us because we try to put things in place so that does not happen. And so, um, you know, we're, we try to work with developers and let them know this is what we want. Um, and, and not what these five members want, but what we feel like the community wants here. And they want responsible development that develops with the land. Uh, if you need a fifteen, fifteen foot buffer and you already have a bunch of fifteen foot, you know, yeah, fifteen foot wide. A group of mature trees, why are you tearing that down and planting trees that are one inch wide? I mean, that doesn't make any sense. And it doesn't, and it saves the developer money. So we, we try to encourage that kind of development. But, um, I mean, there's nothing that we can do to prevent them from being able to build. The product that they want to build, just like no one could come and tell you that you couldn't. Tear down your house and rebuild whatever product you want to build there, as long as it's within the zoning of. If it's a, if you're R twelve, you would have to do, um, either a twelve thousand square foot house, no open space. Or if you're going to include open space, you could shrink the, the size of the, of the build down to ten thousand.
I, I appreciate the explanation of that. I just, the, uh, open space does have some extra requirements because it's not the norm for the development. It's an exception.
Correct.
I just asked if they follow all the rules to that exception. So thank you for.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you being here. Did you have any questions, sir? You'll state your name and your address.
Thank you for letting me speak. Uh, my name is Paul Smart. I live at five, five, six Little Creek Drive. My property is in front and adjacent to the future development of Meadowview Glen, which we are currently talking about. In fact, my backyard looks over the whole development. Uh, I noticed in, uh, in clear cutting the land, they brought in. Several truckloads of dirt, so much dirt that they have created detention ponds. Around the perimeter. These detention ponds helping the floodplain. But they're an eyesore. In fact, they don't drain. I was out there this afternoon. They have put floating drainage devices in there. But my question is, who's going to maintain these? Once the track is built upon and the houses are there, who's going to inspect these draining devices that? To make sure they work. Who's going to control the insects and mosquitoes? And who is going to inspect the vegetation growth? And who is going to inspect the vegetation growth around them? Just today, I pulled out a Nerf football, a basketball, three gallon. Uh, empty gallon jugs that you put milk in and countless cans. So who's going to maintain this, these several detention ponds, make sure they work properly? And also uh do not become an eyesore. That's my question. Thank you.
I mean, I'm 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 concerned even more if that property behind that development for new property owners there. That if you welcome the public on there, you're going to have a lot more trash and and things there as well. I mean. Megan, you can speak to that, right?
Well, some of those detention ponds are right in the backyard of some of those houses. It could become a safety hazard too for children.
I mean, it was.
Is that land going to convey to the HOA? Is there going to be an HOA that will take care of it or?
To my knowledge, no, there's not going to be an HOA that would maintain the grounds.
The ponds are all temporary. They are required erosion control devices. By the state of North Carolina, under our grading permit, under the plan that was submitted to accept all the runoff from the site. Uh, they're all temporary, they will all be filled in. Uh, there are stockpiles of dirt that we have already brought into the site. With the expectation that we're going to use that dirt without having to haul any more dirt in there. The dirt hauling should be over for this particular cul-de-sac. I wanted to make sure I was done with it. We stopped going up and down Wildwood. We have been working with city staff about, you know, making some repairs. All those ponds will be filled in. There will be no permanent structure that has to be maintained by anybody as far as. Stormwater quality retention, anything like that.
Okay, thank you for addressing that. That's a that's a big concern from residents. Uh, is there any other questions? Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and. My name is Chris Ritz, and I'm at five sixty Little Creek Drive. And again, as it relates to just clarity and accountability, because one of the. You know, wondrous parts of this is that there had been so many trees and there's a creek that rhines around. Right now, with the level of dirt that has been increased, and my understanding is there's not any retention walls that have been built. How do we maintain the, how is the creek going to be maintained? And the integrity of of it be maintained so that, you know, that dirt doesn't just simply erode back into into the the creek itself. And and something is lost there.
So the state has very strict reti- uh um erosion control. Um, requirements, and if you see that happening or you see, I mean, that's the reason why the retention ponds are there. Is to try to prevent that erosion. The reason why we encourage, you know, to leave existing development is exactly what you've got. A neighbor over here, Peter um uh upset about his trees that are technically on his property. But because the root system extends, he extends and was and was um disturbed. That that's caused excessive runoff. It causes trees on other people's property to to, you know, to die or to become unstable. Um, in storms and things like that. So we do our very best to encourage that kind of development with. Um, with developers, and that was the whole point of talking to them about this at the annexation meeting. Um, so that they would understand that they do need to work with neighbors and be be a good neighbor, right? And and so um, you know, if you have any concerns about the erosion. Um, into the creek, you can certainly reach out to our assistant city manager. Who can get somebody out there and make sure that everything's in compliance. But we do have inspectors, and through the process, we will have inspectors going out there routinely to um check things. So um, I mean. We get a lot of phone calls about development. I had a lady call me last week about they were uh. Dynamiting in her neighborhood, and she didn't get notice of it, and she was furious, and she found some sort of dynamite registry. Uh, bag in her backyard, not not beside her yard, in the middle of her backyard. And she was calling the sheriff's department because she didn't know what it was. It's an it's unnerving to go to work, and then you come home and there's disruption, right? And so we have to work with people to try to to try to um make sure that we're all developing responsibly. So, thank you. Hi, if you'll state your name and your address, sir.
Uh, Bill Bryant, live at nineteen oh four Metta View Drive, which is just up the street from where the development is. Unfortunately, we were like the rest of the street adversely affected with trucks coming up and down the street. We probably figured over the three weeks, there were probably two thousand truckloads of dirt. The roads and y'all was talking about are, they know they're bad, they're and they're getting worse. Uh, there's still another section to be filled, which probably with almost as much dirt is was put back there, plus to it. And he, they say they're going to work with the city to repair these streets. What assurance do we have that they will do this?
Well.
Or is it going to be like, his twelve thousand square foot is now eleven thousand square foot, you know?
Aaron. This is not a question that I did not already ask, I'll just say that.
Yeah, so so the road will be repaired. Uh, as it stands right now, our Public Works Director is working with, as mentioned earlier. Even if we have to do it, it's going to get repaired.
Okay, so the city, so we'll pay taxes, we're paying, we'll be repairing the road later. Is that what you're telling me?
That's that's not the intent that it stands, but I guess to answer your question of to make sure it gets done. We're saying it's going to get done, if and if it takes us having to do it, and I get your point on that as well. But we're working to make sure that we coordinate with Windsor to take care of the repairs.
Okay, that would be great, but that's like I said, so far his his track record is not very good, it looks like. I was just want some assurance that my taxes or my city taxes don't rise up to repair two streets. Or three streets, whatever it happens to be, because they did not decide to help us out.
Well, it's certainly the intent of the city to ask Windsor to be a responsible developer. And fix what they have broken. They acknowledge that the road has failed as a result of. The high traffic that has gone down that road, Wildwood, um, and.
Well, Metta View is uh it's not as bad as Wildwood, and the only reason is I think it was a better built road. Maybe than Wildwood is is wider, it's it's been there longer, and this is a neighborhood that's been there for twenty five years or more. And all of a sudden, we're in the midst of construction, like a lot of other neighborhoods, I'm sure, but we just. We don't mind, we don't mind development. Don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to say that. What I'm saying is, I play by the rules.
I I one hundred percent agree, and if I go out and I damage something. And um I have a business and I do that, then I make sure it's right. And um we hope that Windsor will also make sure and ensure that it is right and properly fixed.
Okay, I like to hope, but I hope we have some assurances from them, some in writing or something that says.
Legally, we can't hold an annexation over somebody's head to repair a road, but I can tell you that in good faith. I believe that Windsor will fix the road. I hope I am not disappointed.
I hope not either. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak? I greatly appreciate um the residents taking time out of their schedules to come down and. Address the council about their concerns and also allow uh Mister Michaels to hear some concerns. So that hopefully he can take it back to the powers that be and um. Hopefully with the road, that would go a long way with the residents, sir.
As I stated, we were working with Mister Robertson, his staff. We've looked at the road, we understand why we think some failures occurred in certain places. And we will continue to work with them to make sure that uh the road is 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 put back in good shape.
Thank you very much. I greatly appreciate that. There was no one else signed up to speak tonight? Is there anyone in regards to any other subjects that are here to speak? Yeah, I know, we're going. Yes.
Madam Mayor, uh I, in my capacity as a property owner, I was under the impression, I had been told that an item would be on the agenda. Coming through the planning department to get an extension on a submission for the facade grant, but I don't see anything. That great, is that news to you, Ms. Manager? Well, let me just say in advance, or since it's not on the agenda. Uh, we had, first of all, it was my mistake, I misremembered the date that that things were due. I remembered it as the end of the month, May thirty first and June thirtieth, and instead, when I reread the email, it was the first of May and first of June. But at any rate, we had been awarded a facade grant. I understand the city wants to get that done by the end of June. We were, didn't have it done by the end of May, but we do have it done now. And so we will be submitting all the paperwork to have it so that the city can consummate it by the end of June. But I was told at least that because we were late, it would have to come before the council. But if it doesn't, that's fine, but I just want to.
I think if it only goes into the next um thing, and I thought the only person that needed it to go past. June thirtieth was Griffin McClure.
So I'm not aware of any that are going beyond June thirty. With that being the end of our fiscal year, then that money would roll to fund balance, and if council desired. Then you could reappropriate that in the new fiscal year. So the money would roll to fund balance, and then we could bring a budget amendment before council. Um, to pick that money up from fund balance and just reallocate it into the new fiscal year.
Uh, we're hoping to get it to you soon enough that you can get it in this fiscal year and not have to deal with the more complicated things. And uh, the planner had indicated that was the route that y'all would be taking, and so when I didn't see it on the agenda, I was a little surprised. But just so you all know, and and we'll try to get that to you.
Yeah, we were made aware, Tom, and because you were going to have it taken care of um prior to the end of this fiscal year.
Yes.
We were just going to make sure that our finance director was made aware, so that she knew that those funds would be taken out. So you're 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 fine.
Okay, good. That's fine. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Okay, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider the adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget ordinance. Um, the twenty twenty three pay plan and the twenty twenty three, twenty four rates and fee schedule. Um, I had spoken with Megan prior to the meeting about the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Play pay plan, and we're not technically accepting. That in this meeting, I just want to clarify that, that we will have an opportunity to review that pay plan in detail. At an upcoming meeting, and I'd like to recognize um manager Megan Garner.
Yeah, so to jump on your comment regarding the pay plan, the one that was in the book, the budget book for your consideration. Is the pay plan as it stands this current fiscal year, plus the cost of living. As you're aware, in the current fiscal year, there were funds allocated for a pay plan study. Those are not being incorporated at this time, and it will be brought before council as a separate agenda item for a possible mid-year implementation. So we're all on the same page on that one. So jumping into budget, I will sort of recap, pick up where we left off. Um, your May ninth meeting, you received the manager's proposed budget. We had a work session on May twenty third. We appreciate the time that you gave us that day and and the feedback. Council made some revisions. Staff went back, sharpened their pencils a little bit, and made some more revisions. And then tonight, your budget public hearing is here for any member of the public who would like to make comment. Again, as a recap, these are the tax values as provided to us by Alance County. From the last revow in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen to present. So you can see the huge jump between our current fiscal year and the upcoming fiscal year. This is a revow year, so we are required to publish our revenue neutral rate. Our revenue neutral rate is twenty eight ninety nine. In the current year, where we sit, our tax rate is forty five five. When you got your budget in May, the manager proposed budget included a tax rate of thirty five, which was a ten and a half cent reduction. But above the revenue neutral rate of twenty eight ninety nine. In addition to the revisions that council made at the work session and staff initiated changes. The budget that was evaluated and uploaded to you has a proposed tax rate of thirty two seventy eight. To kind of give you an overview of some of our summary of changes, the expenditure is reduced by around four hundred and fourteen thousand. I can go through these, most of these we talked about. Um, council professional services were reduced by eight thousand dollars. The HR assistant was reclassed to a pay grade of fourteen. The camera system for IT, instead of being a two-year implementation, was pushed to a three-year implementation. The carpet in the council chamber was removed, police department flooring was removed. The cabinet kitchen remodel and the fire department was removed. The uniforms were reduced and the small equipment budget was reduced. Our streets and highways, we reduced the paving allocation by a hundred and twenty five thousand. And we completely removed the twenty thousand for any parking lot repairs at Public Works. We removed the ADA entry door at the rec center. Pontoon boat trailer was reduced in the lake budget. Athlete facilities lost the Marshall Street Playground Equipment. And then in the upcoming budget year, as the revised budget was presented. We do have funds allocated for an exploratory arts around the square program. There are ten thousand dollars allocated for that. As this council is aware, there are a lot of deferred maintenance and capital items that have have carried on from year to year. So that funding is over one point five million dollars. We do have a mandatory employer retirement contribution increase. This is one of probably four or five years, every year they've been increasing that allocation. And we do have two new school resource officers that were approved after our current year budget was approved. Um, and that is partially offset by funding from ABSS. But it still has to be recognized as an expenditure on the on the expense side. Fee schedule revisions, we went over the the revisions at the budget presentation and in the work session. One modification that came from a conversation um with Mayor Tally this morning, that's for council consideration. Is to put some sort of a note under the site development reinspection fee. The the intent of this is not for it to be a money grab on the side of the city. To just arbitrarily charge the reinspection fee, but this would be for items where. The developer has contacted the city for a reinspection, and none of the items that were addressed at the initial inspection. Have even been um attempted. And this would be Public Works largely charging these fees for repeat trips out to developments when they haven't. Made the attempts to correct the items that were deficient to begin with. And then all processing fees for debit or credit cards would be passed to the consumer. And then the last um item here just shows you our fund balance appropriation. As you're aware, the fund balance appropriation is the amount of money that is moved from your fund balance to your operating. Generally, in essence, to balance the budget. We were able to significantly reduce the fund balance appropriation for the proposed fiscal year. Um, twenty three, twenty four. And per statutes, we are required to hold a public hearing um before council can consider adoption.
I want to address some concerns that I personally have. Because I feel like we've been kind of dealt a bad hand uh in regards to this reevaluation process. The City of Graham has not had any input as to um schedule of values. Uh, which is past almost a, I don't know, I think back in December of last year. In regards to um how you determine value in this county. And uh I had real concerns when they made references to. And I had real concerns when they made references to changing values based on an aerial flyby and Google Street View and Zillow and Realtor.com. And you can see that in pages 57 and 58 of the schedule of values. I took the schedule of values that they had back in 2017 and compared it with the new one and was quite concerned that a lot of things, basically it was completely changed. And in my personal opinion, not to the better. There, it says that if you don't have sufficient in-office photographs of the property, whereas in the past, they would go out to your property and do a bunch of field work and actually take pictures, that if they don't have that from either Zillow or Trulia to see the inside of your house because it hasn't changed hands during that time and you're holding the property, that they are supposed to go out and do field visits. But there are properties that I know of that burned or had different change, obviously, in their value if they burned or been set on fire, and those properties were given new evaluations that were almost double. I think another real concern that I've heard over and over from residents is the idea of what is revenue neutral. And when I talk to people and they say, well, I didn't appeal my value because the county commissioners and the cities are going to go to revenue neutral, and so my bill is going to be the same, I'm very quick to tell them that is not correct. And I just want you to think for a few minutes that the tax rate affects much more than just real estate. It affects boats, luxury items, all of the equipment that's in any of the commercial buildings. So all of the tax on equipment in buildings, all of that. So when you cut the tax rate in half, that burden for the revenue neutral overall expense is now put on residential property owners. Because everybody here that pays a vehicle tax, now your tax is going to be cut in half. And that burden is now going to, from the Amazons and the Lidos and the corporate companies. You think of how much equipment is valued in the UPS building. All of that is now going to be cut in half, and that burden is now going to go to every individual real estate property owner. So when you say that you're going revenue neutral and you expect your bill to be the same, I think you're going to have a rude awakening when the bills go out in August. So, and they're going to be upset because now it'll be too late for them to appeal. So I really hope, and I hope Mr. Boney, you will, what good it will do now, I don't know, but inform the public as much as as they can that revenue neutral does not mean that your bill is going to be the same when you get it in August. In 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 regards to the in regards to how much the properties went up, a lot of people were saying, you know, 20%, 30%. But all the numbers from from my calculations is that on average, properties, residential properties went up 112%. And I don't know if you can put back up, Erin, that chart there of the first chart that has the calculations there. On average, from 2017, that averages out to be around 4% in value change. And never in the history of ever have we had a 65% value change. I mean, in the history of, you know, since they started charging taxes. So I just have grave concerns over this reevaluation. I don't agree with it. When I mentioned to an appraiser that they were using Zillow to value property, he laughed and couldn't believe that that was part of the schedule of values. And so I looked it up. I did the research and looked it up. And, you know, so basically, it says in the in the new schedule of values, it says, rather than using internal tax data, and this is from years and years of reevaluating property here in Alamance County, publicly available statistical data from Zillow was used to determine the average value of residential property per month for each eight market areas. So when you go to Guilford County and you look, they just went through a reassessment. It specifically says, our appraisers spent a substantial amount of time qualifying all sales due to developed property values, automated value models, which is what Zillow and Trulia are, are those sites. And any anyone using those sites do not research sales to determine if they meet requirements for qualification. These sites also do not have knowledge of local market variations, and they strongly, you know, do not recommend that you use Zillow and Trulia in order to establish value. And that goes to stand that in 2022, Zillow was sued by their own shareholders for the algorithm that they use to overvalue property. And they actually had to buy down the value of $500 million worth of property that they purchased because they're a for-profit company. So they go into communities, they buy property, they overvalue it, and then they sell it under a pseudonym. And this is who is doing our evaluation. There's no wonder why we have these kind of numbers. The unintended consequences of all of this is going to be gentrification. And if you look up the definition of gentrification, it says very clearly, high mortgages, higher property values and higher taxes. Those are the three things that cause gentrification. And we have all of those. Everybody's property tax that is fixed into their escrow, now their mortgages will go up accordingly. So I just, you know, I want us all to not think about how we can pay because obviously landlords or property owners, they're just going to pass the cost on to the tenant. They're gonna, if they want to be in business, that's just going to be a passed-on cost. But in a market where we already have a housing crisis, I just really want us to think intently about how this can really hurt our community and the availability of of housing. And I want you to also think about this. Guilford County, like I said, just went through this last year. The market, and that was when the market was at its highest, okay? So last year, the market was at its very highest. Their rate that they came back was .7305. Durham's rate that they did in 2019 is .7222. Orange County is .8312. So assuming that everything is correct and that this, that this reevaluation is correct, the new reevaluation properties are correct, assuming the revenue neutral of .42, which is what the county says is their new rate, a house on Main Street in Graham would have to be worth twice as much as a house on Main Street in Greensboro, High Point, Chapel Hill, and Durham. I just don't see how that's possible. So I do think there's a significant error in the schedule of values. I do think that these new values are going to pass the burden from corporate ownership that was paying a significant amount of the revenue coming into our city and into the county. And now that's going to be passed on as a burden to our residents and seniors and people that are on fixed income. So I just challenge the council to to look at anything that we can do to try to keep the tax rate revenue neutral. I know that we went through the budget and pulled out a lot of things. If we could defer any new cost items in order to bring down the budget further, I would love to hear from any council members on that or using fund balance in order to be able to bring it down some. I I just have real concerns about this. And then we can look at it again and look at any budget shortfalls that we have after the money, like every, all the appeals are exhausted sometime maybe in October, and see if there's an opportunity for us to make changes at that time. But we will have a, I think, a pretty good fund balance. You know, the fund balance of the money that we didn't use this year will carry forward next year. But Megan, you didn't know what that number was, right?
Right. So since we haven't closed out our current fiscal year, we won't know until the auditors come on site and do all their work.
Do you have a ballpark of what you think it might be?
I do not. No.
So the difference from where we're at now and revenue neutral is around 800 and some thousand. Is that right?
Yes.
And so, you know, some of the things that are new is the the planner's position, the HR position. And I just want to hear from the rest of the council if they have any concerns about this. And I think we've all been dealt a really bad hand, but it's it's for us to try to figure it out.
Well, I think you're right. When you say we were dealt a bad hand by the county and the way that they did their revaluations, unfortunately, it's done, and there's nothing we can do about it now. I think the city staff has done a really good job trying to whittle this thing down. And I know council, we tried really hard to cut as much as we thought we could cut without starting to, you know, cut services, which is kind of, I feel like what we would have to do in order to get it any lower than what it is right now. To get to revenue neutral, we would definitely have to cut services. And I just don't see. I don't see any way that we can, we could possibly get there.
I'm not suggesting cutting services, but like there's a, on the on the list is to add a planner, to add a, you know, I'm I'm looking at trying to focus on.
I don't think.
Can we get by for a couple of months status quo? Because I know the counting.
I don't think that would lower it to revenue neutral, even if we did that. I mean, do you think it would, Megan? I mean, if we cut those two positions, the the added HR position and the added planner, that would not be anywhere close to enough to get us to revenue neutral. It might shave off, I don't know if I had to guess, we're, what, .3278? Is that what it was?
Right.
I mean, I don't even think it would shave off a point.
What has the COLA been for the last four or five years?
The only one I can tell you with certainty is the current fiscal year was 4%, which was still lower than the CPI.
And we're and we're looking at doing 5% for this this year, right? But that CPI was obviously eight.
Yeah, around eight, correct.
I mean, I don't, I don't want to raise taxes because I have to pay them too, and I don't, I don't want to do it. I mean, it's, it's always ugly when we have to do that. I definitely don't want to do it. But realistically, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place.
So what she was saying earlier about the fund balance that we have typically in the past, if you can pull that up, Erin, in the past, that's what we've spent. I don't know what in the world happened in 16, but they were definitely.
Commerce Park, so you had plenty being allocated for Lido, for the road and all that stuff.
Okay, so on average, you see, I mean, what's the difference there, Megan, between what we spent in 2023 and 2024?
So the the current fiscal year that we're in, I think we had around 1.6 that was appropriated. And for the proposed budget, we're around $600,000.
So if we left it what it was last year, which was on the downtrend, what does, what do people feel about that if we took out the same amount that we've been taking out, I guess?
If you do that, you're, we will be shortsighted.
We have $13 million in that fund.
I've heard comments about we shouldn't be using the fund. We should have a, the balance used to be higher. And now it's like, oh, wait a minute. Let's use it so we can get to a a relative point to emotionally satisfy folks, but yet we will be doing something that would be in the long term detrimental to our community.
It's robbing Peter to pay Paul, I think. I mean, that's.
Well, I don't look at it like that. It's our, it's our savings that we didn't use in a budget that's accumulated. And we're only only required, I mean, some cities only have 50%. What is our percentage that we have?
Were we, did we forecast that we'd have to spend $85 million on our water treatment plant? If our predecessors had, you know, instead of kicking the can down the road, took action way back then, we wouldn't be carrying this $85 million burden today. And to say, well, it's just a surplus. It's a surplus for when something bad happens. We've had to buy a fire truck.
But what I'm saying to you is that, look, for the last, it's 2007, I mean, really from 2018, they've pretty much spent that amount. Is this the time to say, okay, we're going to cut that in half and we're not going to spend that same amount?
We don't have to. We should. I mean, right now, Megan, they're proposing, we have to spend any, it's just $620,000. I just think it's, we're being, I think we will be failing in our responsibility that, you know, we've got some long-term, we've got some long-term projects that we need to address. Water, we will, at some point, need another reservoir. Fire department, we need at least one, if not two substations. We need to begin planning for that. You start taking, spending money today, well, it's just a surplus. Graham is growing. And to say, well, we should strive and hit this revenue neutral, you know, number. The fact is, we've brought it down, it's lower. We brought our tax rate from 40.45 down to less than .33.
And that, okay, I just want you to understand that for the last, I don't know, what is that, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven years, we've used fund balance of, I guess, approximately a million six. And she's bringing, she's, we're cutting the amount that we used in this current budget by a million dollars. What I'm saying is, can you use part, not not cut it by a million dollars, which is more than half of what we have done? For, I mean, you didn't have a problem using the fund balance last year. I agree that we should be saving more. I agree with you. But to cut it that dramatically in one year and put the burden on the residents until this shakes out, I just, I don't know, I'd feel more comfortable doing something in October. I mean, I think that we're going to recover it because I think that you just cut your tax rate in half. And any business that is looking to open a business is going to be looking at that. It's going to be looking at Graham and Alamance County because everybody else is double the rate that they are, and they're going to be able to operate. I mean, UPS, their their tax rate just got cut in half. They'd be crazy. I mean, I do think that it would be a catalyst for people. catalyst for people to be able to say, I mean, to be lower is one thing and be competitive, but to be half is just seems crazy to me. But, I mean, to say that you go from one point six million appropriation to six hundred thousand, if we just did, you know, and we cut it by, you know, six hundred thousand and had a million, would that be a compromise? Because you'd still be cutting it from the one point six to a million. It's money that we didn't use in the previous fiscal year.
You're sounding like the army. Spend it or lose it.
No, it's the opposite.
You're saying, hey, okay, we're not going to spend one point six, but we'll cut it down to a million. Where we're proposing, we're going to cut it down to point to six hundred thousand.
But you're not counting all the money that we saved in this fiscal year. I don't know how many officers that left, were left open that we didn't pay salaries for, that we had jobs budgeted for. There's lots of budget items that we didn't fund this year that we had funding appropriated for. So all of that money will go where, Megan? Into the fund balance. I, I wish I knew what that number was to make you feel more comfortable, but I feel, what is it, what was it last year?
Uh, I would have to look at the audit for fiscal year twenty-two.
Can you look at that for us?
I would have to go get the audit and I could look at it for you. I don't physically have it with me.
Okay. Questions, Joey?
I'm kind of in a somewhat of agreement with both of you.
I appreciate that. I mean, we love, you know, we, we can agree to disagree or whatever, but I just think.
You know, with the, the cost of everything is going up. I mean, the cost of operating the city has gone up. It's not our fault. It's not anything we can do. It's, you know, gas has doubled, price of milk's doubled. I mean, we've got to got to save money for rainy days. And, I mean, we can't be revenue neutral because nothing's neutral. I mean, everything's going up so drastically. Um, to get it as close as we can, I think is a a huge feat on the all of our departments, our city manager, to get it as close as they, where it is. Could we pull some of that fund balance and maybe offset it just a little bit more? Yeah, possibly, without hurting our rainy day fund too much. I mean, I'd like to see those numbers where if we did pull, you're at six hundred, if we bumped it to a million, that's roughly four hundred thousand where it's going to put us in percentages.
A penny is roughly two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. So if you upped it four hundred, you would be a little less than two cents.
What does that put us at? At the thirty-two point seven eight? Where does that bring us to? Thirty point seven eight? Okay.
Probably just to take higher.
All right, I suppose, right.
And we were told, told early on that the cost of the lieutenant positions would not, that they could fund that with the same amount. Is that true? Or did that end up being actually costing?
When they proposed that for the current fiscal year, it would not have been an increase to their overall allocation. However, assuming that it would have been approved this fiscal year, next year, there would have been an increase in the overall allocation. They were proposing, as I understand it, to use lapsed salaries from vacant positions throughout the year. But moving forward, it would be an increase.
And do have one more thing. On the planner position, I thought we were going to look at several things. And not possibly do that this fiscal year. As far as engineer, planner, different things. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with not funding a, a planner. I think the HR staff of one is not good. I think we need to have at least the assistant there.
Yeah, so I didn't get the removal of a, and a second planner as a consensus item from the budget work session, so that remained in there.
How much would that bit be?
We can get our finance director to try to, to run that. Both of those positions currently, you have people in there being paid in some capacity. You have an intern in, in, um, planning and you have a part-time employee in HR, so there are some expenses now, but not obviously what it would be for a full-time. The, the workload and planning, I think Erin could probably speak to.
And it's not, I mean, our budget is a fluid document. I, I think that I would really like to see, I know you're going to be putting out the bid process for an engineer, and I'd like to see relative how much he's in the office versus, you know, a need for a planner at that, a second planner at that time, that once your existing planner Cameron gets more, um, help from a engineer in that, in that process that's already included in here. I mean, I would hope, I think Bobby hopes, I think Bonnie and the rest of us all hope that we can save and offset some of the costs that we have for engineering with having that engineer in-house. I mean, I know that was your intent, right?
No, I've changed my mind in that regard because today an engineer, there are so much specialty for engineers. And to think one individual can cover water, sewer, highway, subdivision development, you know, all those, you know, that's a pipe trick.
No, I, I agree with that. We would have to hire a lot of staff, but there's some things that one person can do here that we're paying a third party to do.
I don't know about that. It sounds good. But what you're asking for is a jack-of-all-trades individual.
No, that they would be giving.
See, when you say engineer, if we were to ask folks, what do you think, who is an engineer? We all have different opinions. You have civil engineers. I'm an industrial engineer. You know? And to think that we can find somebody, come in here and be able to answer all the, the diverse questions that requires an engineer to look at.
But isn't this what we're, what you're trying to do is to put them out so that they can do things like grant writing and, and look at, help review plans in the planning department, just like what we currently have?
So what we're proposing for the upcoming fiscal year is to issue RFQs for, um, stormwater, public works, engineering, on-call services, utility, engineering, on-call services. I think diversifying the, my computer just died, diversifying the, um, engineering firms that we use is going to provide a better product for our citizens at the end of the day. So we weren't proposing designated office hours. Obviously, we still have to have engineers in varying capacities.
Right.
Um, but no, we weren't proposing in-house dedicated office hours. We were going to RFQ the process for the different, um, fields.
In, in reality, an engineer can't do what the planner can do, so having a in-house engineer is not necessarily going to help planning. I mean, it would help them answer a question, but it's not going to help them do their job. I don't think.
No, but there's things that an engineer, like, and, and really, if they even, you know, didn't have necessarily an engineering degree, but just had the knowledge of being able to say whether something can be built or not. Um, and not wasting, you know, time with developers. I just want, really want someone in that position that's very knowledgeable.
As soon as you put engineer in the late, in the title, tech, six-digit salary. Soon as you say engineer.
But we, we spend over a million dollars on engineering.
But given the, the idea now is we have a stable of engineering firms that if you have a sewer question, then let's send it to the engineer company that has that. That's their forte.
I think with the, with what, um, Megan is proposing to be able to bid that out, I think we can get substantial cost savings and get people that are more engineers or firms that are more specialized in our specific need at that time. I think that would help us and it would save us money by bidding that out. Is that, that what the purpose?
Correct.
Yeah.
And to provide a, a quality service at the end of the day. And I will just point out procedurally, we do still have to open and hold the public hearing.
And a mayor make a motion that we open a public hearing for public comment.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Um, is there anyone here that would like to speak on the proposed budget tonight?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Could you get that, uh, chart back up, please, the appropriated fund balance? Uh, Madam Mayor, the, I heard you ask a question. I never did hear the answer in terms of what is our current percentage of fund balance? Do we know that answer? Are we going to get that answer?
That would be from our last audit. Because the current year that we're in obviously hasn't closed, so that number's subject to change between now and when the audit.
This chart here that's showing, is that the amount of a fund balance appropriated that was in the budgets that were submitted and prepared and voted on those years? Is that what that represents?
Yeah, the fund balance appropriation.
Okay. And what are the comparable figures of what turned out to be the actual fund balance appropriated in those years? Because Madam Mayor and, and counsel, this is the part I think you're, you're missing. The, part of the mayor hasn't made this point, but this is the point that should be made. Historically, the city says it's going to appropriate, let's say, I'll round it up and say one point five million is what we're going to appropriate from the fund balance to balance our budget. But in reality, in almost every year, in fact, I'm not aware of an exception, the city has not used that much because you get more revenue in than you anticipated from sales tax for one, uh, from, uh, from additional, uh, property tax for another. I think in the big picture, y'all are also missing several important points. The, the revenue neutral rate is not just revenue neutral. It is assumes an increase of what's called natural growth from last year. So what the manager is proposing or where you stand now with this, uh, thirty-two point, uh,
Seventy-eight.
Three-two, seven-eight. Thirty, thirty-two, seventy-eight is a significant increase. That's a ten percent increase in property taxes. And that is, uh, in, in my opinion, very high. I would draw you back to a couple of the positions. I don't understand how for a city that has, what do we have, about a hundred employees?
Um, hundred and thirty.
Full-time, around a hundred and thirty.
Hundred and thirty employees and it requires two full-time human resource people to take care of that? I don't think that's reasonable. I think it should easily be able to be handled with one. Uh, I think I should also point out that the manager mentioned her COLA in here is a five percent increase for, um, for city employees. That is higher than every jurisdiction except Meven in the county. The county commissioners have tentatively come up with a revenue neutral number at a work session today. And part of their plan was to, is to lower their managers' COLA from five percent to four percent. I think that is a much more reasonable amount. That is what the city of Burlington did. I might point out, that's four percent is their COLA. Uh, no one has five in the county except Graham and Meven has six. But the, um, but back, but want to go back to the fund balance on that chart. Uh, I, I can keep track of my time or y'all can, but in other words, the, the important point is historically, the city does not draw down those amounts of money in any year. You can get your finance people to look it up in previous audits and that the amount appropriated in the budget is not what actually gets appropriated. So, uh, to Councilman Chin's concern, it's not that you're rating it. And, and the total pot of the, um, uh, fund balance, in my opinion, is a accumulation of overtaxation from the past. You have accumulated all this extra money from sales tax, from property tax, from fees, from everything else going into a big pot. And so the idea that you're going to save aside this pot for something future, you, you don't need to save the entire pot for something future. And instead, you, you ought to be considering the taxpayers, residential, business and otherwise. And in my view, you should have come up with and still should come up with a revenue neutral number. I would also say that the cities have been unreasonable, in this county have been unreasonable. The proposal of the city manager was originally a twenty-one percent increase in spending, excuse me, in the tax rate above revenue neutral. Twenty-one percent, that was second only to Burlington. Burlington's cut it to eighteen percent. This new number is approximately ten percent. But in other words, th- there's no reason the city can't live within its means and be at revenue neutral. And, um, uh, it, it, it just seems to me that the city is not being realistic with what had either the historic, the historic record in, in budgets nor with the surrounding area and the county. It, why would the county be able to come up with zero, uh, basically a, a revenue neutral number and the city of Graham came? Um, I, I believe that it, that when, uh, taxpayers get those August bills that the mayor has referenced, they're going to be fit to be tied to find out how much you all have raised taxes if you go with this, uh, thirty-two point seven eight, uh, number. And I, I would just continue to urge you to trim, to use some of the fund balance, to cut some of the unnecessary expenses and the extravagances such as the higher-than-normal, uh, uh, pay. I mean, see, here's the thing, you, you, the manager's concerned about the five percent and the increase in cost of living for the city employees. No, that's understandable. What about the cost of living for the taxpayer? It went up also. I, I'll, I'll leave it there. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak, uh, in regards to the, um, budget tonight?
And a mayor make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting closed, public comment. Megan, what does, um, what does the one percent from five percent to four percent, what is that equal to?
We would have to run the salary numbers for every department. It's not just salary. It would affect all, all your personnel-related items as well.
Can you, can you run that number?
Melanie can, can try to run that.
While she's running that number, can we take a?
Sure. Uh, do I have, I have a motion to recess for ten minutes? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. We're standing at recess for ten minutes.
Shoot, we should have brought that time. I had rolled out all the personnel calls.
Yeah.
I took the budget and.
You forgot us.
It's like. Aaron, can you go find the percentage of what our fund? Aaron, can you go find the percentage of what our fund balance is?
Oh, I've got my keys, you know.
Okay. Can you look at the audit? Can you grab the audit for her? I mean, I'm not going to vote for a budget that's not revenue neutral. Trying to get other people to see the value in that. Well, that's what I was trying to say, but they wouldn't give me the numbers. They won't say the numbers.
Hey.
Oh, we liked it a lot.
I liked it, yes.
It's nice, yeah. I think it's real pretty, you know, that's Jennifer's daughter.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not watching. About a week to do it.
Yep. Did a really good job.
I, I hear some negative about that. Again, I hear some negative about that.
What?
Somebody, somebody, I was looking at it. And I thought it, it really stood, stood out. And she said, wow, they detained Graham.
Why are they what?
Detained, but, but an artwork there, it takes away from the city of Graham.
Well, I think ours is prettier than the others.
They are, it is. And I thought, I said, look, what's historic town? And I said, you don't want to give up the history because somebody wants to make you look like Chaplain.
Right. Bernard, how you like the, uh, your mural?
Mural.
I like it very well. And by the way, thanks to your wife for the, uh, resolution of putting our name at the very bottom, which is not a part of the mural technically, but, uh, was a way of satisfying the, uh, the Star Resources Commission. Um, to have no, uh, you know, commercial part in the mural, you could have a sign below the. Above or below, she said, and below. That was a good resolution. Y'all will need to check this part here though, because you're not using that much, uh, actual appropriating. Get you some audits, not just this past year, but of a year's, and you'll see that. Fund balance.
Well, I've seen you around.
If we don't.
Seen you around.
But what do you, what do you need? That's part of the question.
Right. You got it by Alice's right there.
And they've been fine that's long, for about 30 years.
A while was just saying.
We got us, we've got us, Eric.
But you've all opened for six years, uh.
Well, we've all. Right hand. Well, I guess that's a previous, uh, freezing state, but, uh. But anyway. So anyway. The next fifteen, twenty years wouldn't need at least two, at least two parts of suspension.
We really need them now according to the study. We need them now.
Yeah, we really need them now. But if you don't start putting money aside. But you could pay cash now for both, both new fire stations. You've got enough money in there to do that, right? I, I dare say. You ask them, and they bring you back the figures. In other words, it's constantly saving aside over taxing and then saving the money for more taxes that you got in, your sales tax, your property tax, and they keep the money there. The, the state requires you to pay 8% of your budget in bulk. I have, I dare say we're over 50% in the past. It's been up beside sixty and seventy. And, uh, there's, there's.
Something to think about too, Bobby, is what Mr. Barney had to think is, is the future group. You've got to look at how many houses are going to be coming on this market. You're, you're, I mean, not only industry, but you look at the houses we're getting that are being built right now that are going to be sold in this, this coming year. You're, you're, you're probably pushing a thousand houses.
The controversial ones, Michael's and others that are going to be coming online. UPS, which Graham will get its share of, um, if one of the side Amazon sells to somebody, um, that will, Graham will get its share of that one.
You, you, you're feasibly in the next, they're going to bring on at least a thousand homes plus, plus the industry that's going to go into that fund for growth.
Yeah. But, yeah. Our, our police department.
Yeah, I, I guess from my point of view, and I think most of the council, the can has been kicked for so long on deferred things that should have already been done, that we're just scared that if we keep kicking the can, where are we going to be?
But what can are you kicking?
Oh, I see.
Of what? Maintenance of what?
Well, I mean, it, it, I mean, perfect example, the original bid for the, ten years ago for the water treatment plant was $11 million because they did, they kicked the can. It cost the taxpayers eighty, eighty, seven, seventy-three, seventy-two, seventy-three million. Yeah, but I'm talking about versus the 11. We could have got it built for 11. Now it's eighty, eighty-three. So, you know, I mean, that's, that's where you don't want to continue to kick the can in long term. It costs you way more money.
I see, I see.
No, there is the third maintenance there.
Yeah, it's like the fire truck. If they would have spent the extra $75,000 on the right ladder back when they bought the truck in '05, we wouldn't have just had to spend $2 million to replace it because it would have still been in good shape. So it's just, that's why I'm talking about my kicking the can.
Yes. Obviously, fire department, little truck, maybe ten, fifteen years. Even now, today, they'll pay you for the last penny. It won't. They won't let it. They'll say it needs to be replaced in 10, 12, 15.
That truck was.
Nice ride you got there.
Thank you very much.
That's what they had now was.
I haven't met you officially yet.
Oh, I'm Bonnie. Nice to meet you.
It's Bonnie Britt.
Andy Mercer.
Nice to meet you, Andy.
But we don't want to continue to defer. It's like the, one of the proposed wastewater. They had a bid on that two or three, I mean, three years ago, I think for a hundred and fifty. Now it's going to cost us 500.
For what now?
I forget which one it was. It was one of the wastewater, uh.
Substation?
No, no, just the drainage system, uh.
You talking thousand or?
Yeah, like a hundred. It was like a hundred and some, a hundred and thirty thousand. That's 500,000. Yeah, because, because, you know, that, that's, that's what I'm referring to by kicking the can. It just continues to cost more money if things aren't done.
Now we're going to get cheap.
Yeah. But you made a good point and I appreciate it.
Yeah. But then, you're right. What you eat next food is what they.
Guess that was a zero calorie magic brown.
Yes, absolutely. That's what we had. Zero calorie. That's it.
That's right.
And it was delicious.
Imagine in your mind, just that brown.
Delicious.
Okay, let's get back, get this business.
I hope so. Call for a motion to come back into session?
And a mayor make a motion that we come back into session.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
According to the MDNA from the audit that was for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, so the last audit completed, um, the available fund balance for general fund was 69% of total general fund expenditures for the fiscal year. I believe that's the percentage you're seeking. As far as the 5% cola, I would have to have longer than 10 minutes in order to calculate that, but I'm happy to do so for you.
And what is the total amount?
Thirteen million something.
That included restricted amounts. Um, the available fund balance for general fund at the end of fiscal year 2022 was $10,835,599.
Thirteen million.
How much of the fund balance that was proposed in the budget was spent or used?
Uh, to the best of my knowledge, for the last 11 years, I believe that's how many I pulled. One second. Yeah. For the last 11 years, we've appropriated fund balance each year and we have not actually had to use fund balance.
So we really haven't used it at all?
Correct.
There you go. So I just don't want you to think that, I was trying to get the number from Megan for, for this one. I asked her this morning for it, but I just don't want you to think we're being irresponsible by doing this. But I do think that if your city is healthy and you believe that your city will grow normally as it has for, like she said, the last 10 years, then we should be bringing in enough revenue to offset that, that we don't have a need to put that burden on the individual property tax owner. And I will say that when he initially, when the newspaper initially came out, I don't remember those numbers, but maybe Tom does, um, that Graham was the hardest hit in the whole county for valuations with they, they raked over the coals, Graham, and Graham just got hit the hardest, didn't they? I don't remember what's.
Four less 80% Countywide average, seventy-eight point something.
Budget is a, um, fluid document. And if, you know, is it, um, can we adopt something now? And if we have any budget shortfalls, address that, um, say in October, when we actually have a better number and all the appeals are expired? I mean, is it the majority of the council that they want to mess with the cola? If that's the majority of the council that they don't want to mess with the cola, then we need to mark that off the list. What about you guys?
You mean, do we want to reduce it? Is that what you're asking?
Well, Burlington reduced theirs and the county reduced theirs to four. Um, but if we don't want to reduce it, I'm, I'm fine with that. I just want to know, are you guys okay with that? Is that off the table?
I, I don't want to mess with it. I don't want to. Yeah, we, we, we don't pay, you know, we're having trouble being competitive as it is. And I, I think if we do that, we're cutting our nose off despite our face.
Right. So what about the additional, um, the planner and the additional, um, HR position? What does the council feel about those positions? Uh, I think Joey had said he wanted to wait on the planner. Is that a consensus? And then do you want to wait on the HR person and then we see how much money comes in?
How long on the planner are we talking about? Six months, three months?
It's my belief that we're going to get in enough revenue to be able to fund those two positions.
Basically have the positions unfunded and then when we have the pay plan, if, if, and if the revenue comes in, then we will fund them and hire somebody.
Right.
Right.
What can we fund with ARPA funds? Anything that we can fund with that? Because there's about $250,000 still left there, right?
I think it's in the 379 range off the top of my head.
What can we fund with that? There.
So one substantial capital item in your proposed budget is a garage addition at Public Works. I think it's 196,000. So if it's consensus of, as consensus of council, that can be considered for ARPA funding. So you've got close to a penny. Not quite, but close to a penny on that one.
Um, did, well, that new garage, I forgot to ask you this and it came up the other day. Um, when I first got on, back on the council four years ago, um, there was concern that there wasn't a bathroom down in a certain section of Public Works. Is that where they were concerned about where that bathroom was? Or does that, will that addition have a bathroom?
No, it's workspace. The addition is workspace. I will say that there are ample restrooms, restroom facilities at Public Works.
So we'll fund the garage through.
ARPA?
Yeah.
I mean, the money is there. We've got to use it for something. And if, if you're looking for ways to shave.
Yeah, I just want to say that I want everybody to understand what was said by, um, Melanie was that even though you've had in the budget 1.6 million steadily for the last seven years, you've never had to use it. So putting it in there as a buffer, I think is pretty. I'm, I'm pretty confident that having the difference in a, in that line item that we're going to grow. I don't foresee us not growing. I foresee us exceeding what we grew for the last seven years. So.
Yeah, but see, the fund balance is being used to help have a revenue equals expenditures, right?
Yeah, by statute, you have to adopt a budget where the revenue is equal to the expenditure.
So that's why we have the six hundred thousand.
Right.
Well, we need to bump it up to a million. If it's going to go down here in the revenue.
Why would we what?
The six hundred twenty thousand dollars right now is, is to help us have a balance uh, budget in regards to revenue versus expenditures.
Right, and we have a shortfall to go revenue neutral of eight hundred and some thousand, not counting the planner position being eliminated. So why wouldn't you want to use that? Because what that would actually be taken out of is unbudgeted income that we have consistently for the last ten years gotten. So you're, you know, yes, it's in there to be used, but it's most likely never going to be used because it hasn't been used for the last ten years. Like, we'll bring in more sales tax. We'll bring in more revenue than what the budget is estimating. And you can use that for, to fund this budget. I mean, I'm, I'm just telling you that, yes, it's a budget, but it's, it's not what is really happening.
Raising the fund balance so we can reduce tax rate even lower.
No, no, what?
That's what that sounds like.
Yeah.
That's what it sounds like you're saying.
Uh, yes.
Really, it was closer to twenty-nine, but.
Yeah, to go revenue neutral.
I agree with Bonnie about using the ARCA funds. That'll still leave us about three hundred thousand. Here's, Megan, you said about one point five. I mean, a hundred, hundred hundred and fifty-three or something, hundred and fifty-three thousand.
For the garage, I think it's a hundred and ninety-six.
Thought it was closer to.
It's almost two hundred thousand.
What, what would your, what would your take on that be? Um, what, what, what would that job and title? And how would it benefit the city?
Um, well, I, I certainly think the, the workload to have an additional staff member in the planning department is warranted. Um, I think there's. If, if anyone's been back there and, and spoken with, with Cameron, i- if, if you sit there and, and he's not being pulled in a hundred directions and the phones are ringing a million times, you know, it's, it's, it's probably a good day, I would say. But, um, typically he's, he's swamped and then we have quite a bit of obligation related to meeting liaison responsibilities.
H R C planning board.
But, but we're also looking at, and I think we were talking about at the, um, at the budget workshop, utilizing this person in a larger capacity to, to, to buoy a lot of the areas that we have sort of fallen back on. Um, you know, especially with communication out to the public, um, for some of our uh, smaller grants that we would like to seek. Um, not the ones that the guy that was at the conference, you know, he, he wouldn't dabble with the smaller grants, but these grants are also some that.
Ten thousand dollar grant.
Right, those that we typically get for, you know, downtown.
Feasibly, feasibly, if we put somebody in that position, they're right, and they're getting a handful of these grants a year. They're paying for their position.
Yeah, I, 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 I think just in, in essence of just being able to strengthen the ability of what we can do on our day to day, on top of that, you know, we're paid for itself in that sense. Currently, we're currently, we're, we're, we're above water. But, you know, it's, it's development, continue, development hasn't slowed down. Um, and even if it does, that person can still be utilized as a professional staff member to still do these other items. And with the different plans we have going on with the comp plan update, the pedestrian plan update, the Hall River, uh, the commerce part plan that we're doing out in the Hallfields area. Um, we, we certainly have need if we, we want to do that.
For clarification, elimination of the planner position for both salary and benefits rounded off would be seventy-five thousand dollars.
Megan, would you clarify then the revenue in section two, the revenues that are shown here were computed using the point three two factor?
Yes, the point three two seven eight.
Okay. So if we dropped it down to the revenue neutral.
That's eight hundred thousand.
Eight sixty-five.
What was our, what, what did we use? What do we budget for fund balance last year?
Current year, we're at one point five, I believe.
And revenue neutral still puts us at, what, seven percent increase or something like that? Taxes, does that sound about right? Well, the bill's going to go up. The bills are still going to go up.
Cumulative bill would not go. Individuals will have plus and minus, but in other words, revenue neutral number by definition is you have the same amount of revenue plus natural growth as you would have at the old tax rate.
And from all the estimates I've done, I just want you to understand that when you're saying revenue neutral, you're, the taxpayer is still paying a higher bill because I.
Exactly.
My estimate said be somewhere around thirty percent is going to be deferred from, thinking how many people pay vehicle tax. Half of that is now all deferred to property owners. Everybody that pays for a boat, a trailer, uh, any luxury type items, um, that's personal property tax, equipment tax, all the equipment that's in UPS, Lidl, Walmart.
Right.
I mean, it's up. I mean.
That's what I'm saying. It's still going to go up.
Yeah, even when we go revenue neutral, it's still going to go up, but I feel like we're doing everything we can to be responsible to meet the needs of our budget and also try to protect the, the residential property owners. I, I, I don't agree with shifting that burden, that tax burden from corporate America to residential property owners. And I think that's what's frustrating. I think that we didn't have any input in the process.
Now, how, how would this, if we bump it back to the six hundred, and I know we've got the pay, pay plan study coming up. If that pay plan, if the pays go up, will we still be within a budget if we bump it to the six hun, one point six like we did last year?
I mean, not knowing precise numbers.
Budget's going to, not knowing what the pay plan is going to be precisely, but we would be a lot closer once that pay plan study's done, if we had that fund balance at the one point six or whatever it was that we had last year. Correct?
So are you asking for, if we did a mid-year implementation of the pay plan and the, the funding that would be needed for that, are you asking if we would be closer to the one point six?
Right, if we would get into that.
Could, I mean, could be.
Okay, but if it's not there, then we'll be at a deficit.
Right, the, the implementation of the new pay plan is not in your proposed budget.
Right, because we don't know what that is yet.
Right, yeah, and as, as far as prior year calculations of revenues, I think historically Graham has taken, uh, an ultra conservative approach to revenue estimation. And for the upcoming year, you know, you, you don't want to overestimate them and then come in short. But what we've done is take, you know, a certain point to date, collected, percentage collected and annualized it and then compared it to prior years to see what that growth is going to be. So what our hope is, is to get as close as possible to an actual amount collected so that you don't have a big disparity between what was budgeted and what was collected. And I, I think that's probably just different philosophies over the years, but what we're, we've been trying to do is to get, you know, as close as we feel comfortable to what we think we're reasonably going to collect, and we monitor those throughout the year. So I, I think that for the upcoming year, we stand a, a better chance of being closer than perhaps we have in, in prior years.
And, and we're going to have a eight hundred to a thousand homes finishing up this year, probably. That will go into that equation.
And you that's sure there's going to be more with half the tax rate of everyone around us being double what we're at. Everybody will want to be building here, wouldn't you think?
The one thing that I would add from a finance officer perspective, um, is that the appropriations that have historically been made for fund balance have been made, um, my understanding is that they have been made to cover capital items only, so one-time expense items only. I would caution you from just sitting in this position to arbitrarily pick a fund balance number um, to fill in a hole that you don't have capital items to cover because you don't want to end up unwittingly in a position where you are funding an ongoing expenditure.
Right.
Your savings.
No, we know that.
I don't believe that's correct, however. That's not a correct description. Just as Megan's budget, uh, picked six hundred thousand just arbitrarily, it, it doesn't represent any, uh, correlation to any, any capital, uh, project.
Ones in the past did. If I could, I could pull my books and you will see that the capital items match the appropriation from fund balance. Because the idea was if, if anything hit the fan, if we did not do capital, we would not have to touch the fund balance in hopes that conservatively, conservatively budgeting, that you would be able to, if everything goes fine, cover those capital items and not have to touch the fund balance in that essence, which is what we've been able to do. But I can, I can show you the books.
What's the one point six in this year's?
She, 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 she's referring to prior to, to Megan.
I know, but this year, current year we're in, I believe the figure is one point five, one point six was fund balance appropriated. What was that allegedly covered? Six hundred thousand in this year. No, that's what she.
Last year's budget.
In the existing current year, twenty-two, twenty-three budget.
You, you referring to one year. Melanie was referring to prior years.
But the prior year is, the year you're in is, is also prior budgeted.
Are we, are we doing the sledge tanker? And the capital budget? In utilities? Yeah, the only thing I recall that was, uh, removed from utilities was the U T V for twenty or twenty-five, maybe.
So this year or for next year, that's six hundred K, we have not identified any capital purchases in that.
Oh.
At this.
Yeah, I think our total capital proposed for next year was one point five.
Okay, so if need be, then that's six hundred K would cover. We didn't get sufficient revenues, then that six hundred K would be used against a capital purchase.
Yes.
But as was stated, we have yet to ever get into that fund balance, correct?
I can't speak to ever in the history of ever done, however.
Years you.
For the past eleven years, yes.
So it's kind of a neat point, I think. If we bump it, historically, we don't use it. Stay there if we need it.
Here, uh, Megan.
On growth.
Did we agree to do the downtown water and sewer improvements this year, one point two million? I think you might be looking at a, a future fiscal year. Uh, utilities had around nine hundred and some thousand for a utility project in the proposed. Dated, sorry. It doesn't say a date, so I just that, I just want to go over the ones that you said we did, we didn't have, I guess, that you took out. Because I thought we did a bunch of cuts. Yeah, I think council cuts after the work session was around two hundred thousand. So then we went back and cut another two fifteen or so off of it. But those, that one point two million is not included. It's, is that something in the future? Correct. Okay. And all the vehicles are needed. There was nothing else on the capital budgets that you. Are you doing the playground on Marshall Street? No, that was removed. And the A D A access, you picked that?
Yep, that's all.
To get better quotes, we're gonna do that, but we're hopefully going to get quotes.
So what is council's, um, feeling about using ARCA funds to, um, fund the improvements at the city garage?
Taking two hundred thousand dollars.
When, when does that ARPA money have to be used by? I know there's a date, time, time limit on it.
It has to be encumbered by twenty twenty-four and spent by twenty twenty-six.
There's no reason not to use it.
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Are you fine with just an even two hundred thousand? I think it's one ninety-six, four hundred.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm fine with that, yeah.
You have almost a penny.
We're down to thirty-one, seven, eight.
Seven, eight.
Roughly. So would the council be amenable? Tell me about the planner and the H R position. What is the feeling of the council?
Leave them on the books, but leave them unfunded until we see the pay plan and see what we see.
So if we took them out, then what will we be short to get down to revenue neutral? Melanie will run those numbers for you.
The numbers about seventy-five each.
Eight sixty-five, eight.
Be about a hundred fifty thousand.
Thousand short. We'll be about five hundred and fifty thousand short, I think, roughly.
Could we agree to take that out of, um, I don't like saying because it sounds like it's different than what it is, but that we would put it under the line on of, of fund balance. It's still reducing what we're spending out of fund balance budgetary wise, but in reality, we're not really spending any fund balance. But can we encumber that in that line is what I'm trying to say. Because five hundred and some thousand, it would be no different if we were taking that money and putting, you know, buying this truck or buying that truck and that, like what Aaron's saying, for some reason, the world ends, or maybe when we get a digital currency in July, I don't know. We could, we certainly have five hundred and some thousand dollars in capital improvements that we could, you know, with road resurfacing and all different kinds of things that we could easily cut if we needed to, if we needed to not encumber that in the budget. But as I say over and over, we're not really we no, normally don't, at least historically for ten years, have had to actually pull money out of savings to pay for these things because we do conserve it. Because we do conservatively budget income a lot less than what actually comes in. I mean, what, I mean, our, during COVID, the most detrimental thing, our sales tax dollars went up. So I'm like, if we can survive COVID and still make a profit in the sense of what we had budgeted, and it's in the green, why would that not be something that I feel pretty confident depending on? And then we don't have to do any more cuts and employees and city manager will feel that, you know, we've met the needs and not have to cut anything else.
Removing the HR assistant would save $35,400, because you would still have the part-time HR assistant, which would be replaced by the full-time position, so.
So you had taken her current salary now and took it out? When you did the budget?
Correct.
So you would be eliminating the part-time person?
No, you would keep part-time. What she's saying is the difference between what we were paying her and what we would be paying her as full-time is about thirty-five K, right?
Be her.
I'm just saying, in general, the difference between, between what we're paying the part-time now and what we would be paying for a full-time person is thirty-five K, right? Okay.
This is the difference.
All right.
Because you won't still, once you have a full-time, you won't have a part-time.
Right.
That's what I just asked. Would you be eliminating the part-time position?
Yes.
If you went to a full-time, yes. And I will just point out, I believe the city of Meben has two full-time people in their HR department. And our HR department, in like Meben and other places, does all of our safety and risk management as well.
I, I'm not in favor of probably cutting either one of those after.
But.
Well, we're not saying that we're cutting them. We're saying that we're going to fund them later in the budget. Once we see that we have the money to be able to do so. But I have all the confidence in the world, I mean, something tragic would have to happen between now and, say, you know, September. Be okay with that? Okay?
What we've come up with is the ARPA money for the garage.
Right. Thousand.
Leaving the two positions in, but not hiring until we get our pay plan study, correct? Is that what you're saying?
Leaving, leaving them unbudgeted.
Leaving them, leaving them in the budget.
After we go through our play plan study, play, pay, pay plan study.
Yeah, I would just ask council to consider funding those for the upcoming year, assuming that the pay plan study, which had it at a higher pay grade, the, the HR assistant than what council recommended at fourteen. So we went ahead and lowered it, even though that wasn't what the consultant recommended. We would be asking for a fund balance appropriation, most likely, to implement that pay plan. So if that was the, the route that council was considering, I would just ask that you consider funding it for July one, just simply knowing the workload on those departments.
So when I talked to Megan this morning, she had no problem using fund balance. I trust her, I trust Melanie, that we're going to have enough money to be able to pay for that without actually going into our savings. She didn't even, she said that's the easiest thing to do, and so.
Yeah, I, I think moving 200,000 to ARPA, got a fan running on this thing over here. Moving 200,000 to ARPA and increasing your fund balance appropriation to make up, you know, dropping it to, I don't know, right now we would be at 3178 if you shifted the garage over to ARPA. So I don't know if, if 3178 is where council wants to be, or if you want to be lower than fund balance appropriation could increase to offset whatever difference you wanted to land at. I know at, at the budget work session, kind of thirty-two to thirty-two and a half was, was one range that was thrown out as sort of a target.
What was, what's the amount that we would have to do to be revenue neutral? Is it 500 and what thousand?
I think if we did about 400,000, right?
Yeah, it, I mean, eight hundred and.
One point for 200, roughly.
Yeah, 228,000. So, I mean, just taking the difference from 2899 to 3278 gets you to 864. You take 200 off of that, if you're shifting it to ARPA, then you're around 664. Divided by 228. I don't do that kind of math in my head, but roughly, I can do it.
I make a motion that we approve the budget with the amendments of taking 200,000 from ARPA funds to fund specifically the garage fund, that we increase the appropriation from the fund balance by 664,000 to bring us to a revenue-neutral tax rate. And that we ensure that the Arts Around the Square fund of $10,000 go specifically for that purpose. And not to fund anything else, but that it would be funded specifically for that purpose. And do I have a second?
Matt, I just ask one question. I want to.
What's the rate?
Twenty-eight ninety-nine. She was talking faster than I could write. I apologize.
Down to the revenue-neutral rate with.
Yeah, 2899 would be the revenue-neutral rate.
And because Megan wants to have the two positions funded now, July one, just leave them in the budget as is.
Yeah, move 200,000 from.
ARPA funds.
Mm-hmm, to ARPA, and then increase your fund balance appropriation by roughly 664. Like I said, don't hold me to a hundred percent to that number until we plug it into all the worksheets, but roughly that, which would get us to around 1.2, maybe 1.3 fund balance appropriation.
Would you be happy with that?
I can absolutely live with that.
Do I hear a second? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Money we're not really taking from the savings.
Haven't. In the past eleven years, we have not spent that money. We're gonna grow.
We're absolutely gonna grow.
Just, it just puts us where we need to be on paper.
All opposed?
Aye. All opposed.
All opposed.
Okay. Budget passes three to two. Next. Any other clarifications?
So I think I got the clarifications. I will just point out that in addition to the budget ordinance, which we'll revise with the changes tonight and get to you for signature, we do ask that you make a motion to adopt the 2324 pay plan and the 2324 rates and fees.
Madam Mayor.
I apologize.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt the 2324 pay plan and the 2324 rate and fee schedules.
At with the amendment that you had in there. Second, that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Joey, what did she say? Okay.
Just a question, Madam Mayor. I thought earlier you said the pay plan was not to be decided.
It's, it's not. It's the. We have it in there as a budgetary item, but we are going to look at it in detail and make those changes. And we'll make whatever changes that we need to at, at a future date. But we have it in there for the sake of planning.
Yeah, we, historically, the governing body will adopt the pay plan, which sets forth the, the pay schedules for employees. So I know you adopted it for the current year that we're in. I'm not sure about previous years. But it doesn't include, just to reiterate, the implementation from the survey that the consultant did.
And as a as a point of clarification from earlier, can I get a consensus from the council to direct staff to look at revising the open space ordinance to be more in line with what it was intended?
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you, Aaron. The amendment to the Code of Ordinance, unnecessary and disturbing noise. Boy, we have certainly heard a lot about this, haven't we? So I recognize Aaron Holland in this regard.
Actually, I don't have it pulled up. Well, I know the council had asked the attorneys to look into what options are available to address the, the noise issues that we were having with loud mufflers and things of their like. The attorneys looked at a proposed, some proposed language that was submitted by Councilmember Chen, and also what we currently have on the books as well, and made adjustments to the existing language to. About which section? Yes. So the enforcement and penalty section is where the changes were made. I'm sorry. Which would be section 129 C6 and 129 E3.
So, I mean, I, I get complaints about this all the time. I appreciate Bobby putting forward this to staff. The main concerns that I get are levied is Melville Street in Graham, downtown Graham. They had a ATV going down there with no lights on in the middle of the night, doing wheelies on an ATV, person had no headgear on, passing cars going around Court Square. And the third one is Rogers Road. Get a lot of complaints about Rogers Road. So if there's any way we can get law enforcement to be out there, because I know by the time you guys get called there, usually the, you know, it's gone and it's too late to do anything. But maybe if you, if you do, do you do like things where you stand, like where you kind of post up somewhere to see if there's like an issue? Like at Rogers Road, maybe at five o'clock, or?
Do we post something?
No, like, do you like sit kind of to see if there's like a lot of violations or anything like that in regards to people speeding and being.
They do direct, you're asking if they conduct directed patrol and patrol certain areas that at different times of the day, they do.
Okay. Do you know if they do it on Rogers Road?
I do not. They.
I see them sitting at the South Grand Park pretty regular.
They sit down at the church?
Yeah, the church.
So they are, they are stationary on directed patrol wherever the need analysis shows. And that's where they're deployed based on the needs of the city with the highest traffic flow during certain times of the day.
Okay. Do you get a lot of calls and complaints about Rogers Road and Melville Street and downtown?
Yes.
And Pomeroy, is that?
Did you get a lot of complaints?
Someone called me, but I just, I happened to be in Court Square when somebody, when Tommy Purcell was walking over and somebody.
We also enforce North Carolina General Statute 20-128, which is about, which is a vehicle, motor vehicle exhaust muffler noise. And that is a proactive enforcement, as well as our, our city ordinances.
Well, like what he was saying about this veteran, you know, somebody going by and they, you know, intentionally like making it backfire or whatever. Like to me or Bobby, it's like, we're fine, like, we understand. But for somebody that has a traumatic brain injury, I mean, if you saw his reaction, it would bring you to tears. It's, it's really, really upsetting to see somebody have that kind of physical reaction to noise. So people need to realize that they actually are harming other people when they do that. It's not funny. It's not. And that man served his country, and he deserves not to be treated like that. But we get a lot of complaints about Melville Street and the downtown and stuff. So appreciate your efforts and, and trying to curb that as much as you can.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
See your question. Amendment to the Code of Ordinance, does that not require a public hearing?
No.
No.
Only, only in development ordinance.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the amendment to the Code of Ordinance, Section 12-9 C6, adding Section 12-9 V3 enforcement and penalties.
That's second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Surplus 20, 2005 Seton 85-foot ta- tower ladder fire truck. Council will consider approval of the 2005 Seton 85-tower ladder fire truck as surplus equipment and authorize the city manager and chief, fire chief to advertise the surplus equipment in the appropriate markets.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion.
I think somebody is here to speak on that.
Just here on behalf of the chief. If I have any questions about it, he couldn't be here tonight.
Is, does all the, does, you take all the gear off, right?
Take all the equipment off, yep.
Okay, and then is it possible to fit for, like, do you have estimates for fixing it when you sell it? So that, obviously, you have to disclose that.
I'm not sure if we have estimates on it. I'm sure that the chief has gotten estimates to fix it. But I'm not positive on that. He'd have to ask.
And are y'all going to list it with what, the broker, the fire broker, the fire?
Most li- most likely with the broker. I think it would stand a better chance of getting a higher resale value through them versus listing it with GovDeals or somewhere.
Okay.
And yes, we would disclose the, the known issues.
Okay. So need a motion and a second to approve the surplus property of a 2005 Seton 85-foot tower ladder fire truck.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the classification to sell.
Uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Mayor, on item 10, Board Missions and Appointments, I make a motion that we move this to our next city council meeting. And a mayor on item ten, board missions and appointments, I make a motion that we move this to our next um, city council meeting.
Second.
And that we open the application process. Or the HRC and planning board backup.
Okay. Um. I have a motion and a second. Do uh, um, all in favor of post of um. Putting this on July's agenda?
Was this to postpone all of them or just those two?
I think.
All of them.
And also, we should reopen. The, for applications for the HRC. Graham Historical Museum Board.
Well, anybody that wants to apply.
For any.
Well, you guys will reopen all of them if you're gonna push them all. I mean, I mean, that's.
Yeah, of course, of course, of course.
I have no problem.
I second that and all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I do have a quick question as far as these boards and commissions. What are the term limits? Or, or are there term limits?
Go ahead. There are term limits and they vary per um, order commission. Some are three, some are four.
Terms.
Terms.
Can we get a update on who has already served their term limits?
Yes, I will try to get that.
Okay, um, did uh. We already did public comment, so staff, did you have anything, Melanie? Pass your bedtime in as well.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Brian? Um, Aaron? Um. In a corner, birthday girl? Um, Megan?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I have a couple of announcements. Thursday's at seven, we're gonna have the main event band on Thursday. We've got. Um, also a band this upcoming weekend. Um, that is called. Matt Boswell and the Hillbilly Blues Band, and I was like, what is that? But they are pretty good. They are followed by a lot of people and. Um, they will bring a big crowd to the downtown. That's this Saturday at the Graham Amphitheater and they'll have a car cruise in at four. Um. Slice of summer was great for this past week. Appreciate what the rec department does uh, to put on that event. It's a lot of work. Um, they did really good. Um. Uh, the only issue was uh, I had reached out to, to uh, the rec department about the food trucks being right in front. The way they were on the map, it looked like they were gonna be right in front of Witz and they were all like ice cream and. Uh, fro- frozen drinks and everything. I was like, hmm, they might not like that. So they, they had, they put them around the courthouse, which I thought was. Very accommodating and I very much appreciate that for that business owner. Um, so uh, that's what I, that's what I have. Anything, Bobby? You have anything?
No.
Okay. Anything?
No, ma'am.
Okay, well, uh, let's make a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're standing adjournment. Did you get Mike to come?